Okay, I'm gonna call to order the regular Board of Education meeting for September nineteenth, twenty twenty at Hubble Middle School. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Mr. Long, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, legal, liberty, and justice for all.
So first up is Communications with our host school. This was supposed to be at the new Jefferson Early Childhood Center. We have Mrs. Stephanie Mangini here to talk to us tonight.
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you, the Board of Education, Dr. Schuler, the Senior Leadership Team and the community. My name is Stephanie Mangini and I'm the principal at Jefferson Early Childhood Center. It truly has been an exciting time as we're leading up to and engaging our children in learning at the beginning of the school year. Just a few short weeks ago, I know that many of you were with us, joining us either virtually or in person for our ribbon cutting ceremony. And truly, that would not have been possible without the visionary leadership of everybody sitting before me today. We want to thank you for your unwavering commitment to the importance of early childhood education and the impact that it has not only on the children, but how it strengthens our community. We want to thank you for that. In just a few short weeks, we have truly set the stage, I think, for the foundation of what is to come at Jefferson Early Childhood Center. Before our students were entering the building, we asked them to either draw a picture or send a video telling us what they loved about school or what they thought was important for them to see in the new school building. And they did just exactly that. So what you're gonna see in this video tonight is you're gonna see the students telling their story of what they wanted to see in their school. And in three short days of attendance, you'll see how that materialized and how great things happened at Jefferson, as they always did. And I always say that our children are our youngest learners and our future leaders. However, after viewing this video tonight, I think you'll agree with me that they truly are leaders in their own right right now. There truly have been a lot of challenges as we look forward preparing to the new school, but I want to personally thank the Board of Education, the superintendent, the senior leadership team, and all the staff who came together really beginning since May to make it possible for our students to be in person. I would also like to say that each of you have a brick in front of you. That brick that you have is from Jefferson. And when you look at it, it truly symbolizes the thousands and thousands of students that went through the halls of District two hundred receiving high-quality education. That brick also serves as a bridge from our old Jefferson to our new Jefferson. And regardless of the brick and mortar of any building, I think what we bring with it is that Jefferson always welcomes families, always makes that connection. And regardless of if you're at Jefferson now or in the past, it's always family. And I think that we will bring that with us in the future. And I want to thank each and every one of you for making that possible and making an impact, not only to students at Jefferson this year, but in future generations. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Stephanie. Thank you for your leadership all these years. As I said in our, in the ribbon cutting ceremony, it feels like the turning of the last page of a book, a book that took us about eight years to read. But it's exciting and it was great to see that and great to see the video. So thank you. Next up, we have modifications to the agenda. Does any Board, do any Board members have any modifications they'd like to propose on the agenda tonight?
I do. I would like us to move our discussion items and our oral reports to before the consent agenda. We've got a lot of people listening in online, as well as a lot of people here tonight. And in addition to flipping number one and number two, so we start with the discussion item of reopening twenty twenty-one school year. Second with the proactive practices plan, then the Citizens Advisory Committee and our oral report to do all of that before the consent agenda.
Okay. Is that okay with Board members? We don't really technically have to vote on it? Thumbs up? Everybody good? Okay. Let's go ahead, Mrs. Hutchinson, and make that adjustment. And so we know that there's a lot, as Mrs. Crabtree said, a lot of people here, so we wanted to get the, that agenda item as close to the top as we could. Next up, we have, before we get to public comments, I just, I've been making a little bit of a statement before some of these meetings the last four, six weeks. So this is our first regularly scheduled board meeting since the district adjusted our plans to reopen schools for the twenty twenty-one school year. It has now been six days since the start of the school year, and the district has been understandably focused on having a successful start across all levels, including the fifteen of our twenty-one schools that do have in-person learning. As been, as has been emailed to us many times, we are aware that families are anxious to hear what our plans will be to bring middle school and high school students back for in-person learning. Please understand that it is important that the Board of Education has the opportunity to review and comment on those plans before they are shared with the public. That's the Board's responsibility, and we continue to appreciate your patience and understanding as we work through this. Tonight, the Board will hear an update on our plans for the current school year. More information will be shared at our meeting also on September twenty-third. So this is really just part one of a two-part presentation. Most importantly, on August twenty-eighth, the DuPage County Health Department released a return-to-school framework and the associated dashboard metrics that will indicate when and how we can implement those plans. Those will also be shared with the public tonight. We will also hear specific plans for students with disabilities and English learners. The district is planning on some town halls in coordination with their high school principals so that we can share directly to our school community in a direct and transparent manner how all the rules, guidelines, metrics, considerations, and planning strategies are inextricably linked to each other. This is important because we want all our students back in school. A reminder that specific questions regarding the District two hundred's plans for the twenty twenty-one school year should be sent to a dedicated email address at communications@cust200.org. We do have fifteen people sign up for in-person public comment. So just another statement before we get to that, due to the ongoing pandemic and continued interest in news and discussion on the reopening plans for schools, we are again temporarily amending our public comment procedures for this meeting to allow comments to be emailed to the Board and acknowledged in the meeting. In accordance with Board Policy two point two-three-zero, members of the public attending in person will have the opportunity to make public comments during the meeting. So as I mentioned, we have fifteen people for public comments. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the Board's regular practice not to directly discuss, ask questions, or take action with public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The Board is here to listen. Lack of action or a direct response following public comment does not imply any lack of interest in what is being said. Per Board policy, we have allocated thirty minutes for public comments, and comments on any one subject may be limited twenty minutes. The Board may shorten the time allocation for each person to less than three minutes to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. So I'm gonna make a adjustment to the timeframe tonight because I know we have students that are here that want to talk to us, and this is a critical issue. So we're gonna expand it to about forty-five minutes to try to get as many people as we can to talk, and I'm gonna ask that speakers shorten their comments from three minutes to two minutes. I think that's gonna get, get, get everybody to talk. If there's a lot of duplicate, duplicative comments or you've email, already emailed in your comments, we have read all those or will read those. So new parameters for tonight that we can do by Board policy, we're gonna stretch it out to forty-five minutes and ask two minutes per person. I will also remind all the speakers that we do require you to wear a mask while speaking. So we've had some people try to take that off in the past. I will remind you. So that's the rules that we have to work under. In addition to preserving confidentiality, the Board and its president reserve the right to request that items related to either personnel or students be provided to the Board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session. The Board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the Board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comments. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. As I mentioned, please limit your comments to two minutes. Mrs. Crabtree will be timing, and raise her hand when the two minutes time is approaching, at which time we ask you to wrap up your comments. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the Board or staff. So with that said, we'll go down the list in order of people signed up. First is Eric Brown.
Hello. My name is Eric Brown, and my wife, Les, and I have five kids in District two hundred, a senior, all the way down to a fifth grader. We love this community. We chose to raise our kids in this community. We're both graduates of the high school. My wife taught at the high school. And we're really proud of this community. It's been a little more difficult to defend the state of Illinois recently in light of what's happening with our kids. As everyone knows in this room, eighty percent of us decided to send our kids back, and it sounds like there is a consensus here in the room that you all wanted us to go back as well. It's hard to see the states around us that have solved this problem, and we still have not. I'm gonna read off a few stats real quick. I got these from the DuPage County Health website. Zero deaths so far under the age of eighteen from COVID nineteen, twelve deaths under the age of fifty. There's nine hundred and twenty-two thousand people in DuPage County. So the risk of death through COVID nineteen, if you're under the age of fifty and walking into one of our school buildings, is zero point zero 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 one-two percent. And yet, according to the DuPage County Coroner, suicides and overdoses are up fifty-five percent. No one is talking about this. That's forty-four lives that have been lost. It's sad. It's, it's maddening. And watching the kids that walk through the doors of my house, you can see the sadness, the loneliness, the depression by staring at a screen for twenty-five hours a week. We're seeing more of it in the last week. No one is talking about the mental health. We want to be advocates for the kids. We've got to address it. We're asking all of you to be advocates. The reason I'm speaking tonight is I couldn't look my kids in the eye to say, guys, I'm not gonna do anything anymore. I've gotta speak up. I want them to know that I'm fighting for them, and I'm asking you all to do the same. It's time to leave on the path of the people that I love, my kids, and the people that you have been elected to serve, our children. They, they don't deserve to be left behind. How do we all want to be remembered? I just talked about how I want them to know that I fought for them. I would ask, I think that you all want to be remembered. Everyone's gonna remember a moment in time during this, our lifetime, which is, how did you handle during this time as an elected official? It's your legacy. It's my legacy. We've got to take a stand to do what's best. Teachers, kids, and administrators are all coming to me and saying, speak up for us. I'm gonna leave one more story. I see your hand going up. A recent administrator told me he walked into the apartment building and knocked on doors to ask kids to sign into Zoom that have not been signed in for the week. And there was no supervision, and there was no motivation to do it. We've got to take a stand for these kids.
Thank you. Next up is Dave Ruggles.
Thank you for having us tonight. I, I want to first thank you all for the job you do. I'm actually kind of embarrassed to say this. It's the first board meeting I've been to, and I recognize that's a problem. A lot of us get caught up in our lives. We do our, our own thing. We kind of leave these things to, whatever happens, happens. And I think in this particular case, we found that, why this is so important, that you people are in the position you're in. I mean, this is really your moment. In my opinion, you start with the premise that you have in-person learning and you have sports. That's what Indiana did. That's what Michigan's starting to do. That's what Iowa does. Once you've made that decision, you get the people in the room who can influence that decision and figure out how to make that happen. If you take that approach, it's actually very simple. And that's really, as a businessman, that's how we do it in the business world. You have a problem, you figure out what you're gonna do, but you don't give yourself the out to fail. If you don't give yourself the option, you'll work it out really quickly and you'll figure out what you have to do. What are the problems that you have to make this work? You, teachers, what's your problem? Union, what's your problem? Administrators, what's your problem? We'll figure it out. Let's figure it out, but we don't know what the problem is. What we do have right now is we have everybody pointing fingers at one another, and that's just not leadership. Doesn't work in the real world. And, and many of you are probably business people. I, I don't, I actually don't know who any of you are, and that's, that's on me. That's not on you. But I, I can tell you as a person who runs a business that this isn't how it works in the real world. And, and we elected you to represent the eighty percent people who want in-person learning. And for whatever reason, you're not doing it, which to me means you're failing right now. I understand the IDPH guidelines. One of the questions I asked back and forth with Dr. Schuler, has anybody asked the question, what happens if we don't follow the guidelines? And the answer, I think, is no. If you haven't answered that or haven't asked that question, you're not serious about making this happen. I mean, really, they're guidelines. They're not a mandate. They're not law. They're guidelines. Figure it out. Show leadership. This is your moment. These kids are suffering. Their opportunities are being missed on all different levels. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next, next up is Becca Hoenstein, Hoenstein? Can't hear me? Oh, Becca Hoenstein. I have to wait for the applause. After this will be Jeff Weston, just so we're ready.
Hi, my name is Becca Hoenstein, and I am a senior at Weenworth South. Just like thousands of students around Illinois, I desire a quick return to in-person instruction at my school. Remote learning is not an alternative to in-person instruction. It is a completely different experience that fails to achieve the same results. Schools are prepared to offer remote options to students and teachers that are not ready to return to the building, but it's not considered an option when all students are required to do it. Now is the time to provide in-person instruction to those who are prepared to return. Our districts are capable of bringing us back into the building so that we can get the full experience that our schools are designed to provide. We have seen our school year begin with Chromebook monitors and Zoom calls. But what we need to see is the daily sight of our peers alongside us so that we can manage the ups and downs of growing up at an especially formative time in our lives. Students don't need to be shielded from the realities that our world faces. We just need the proper education that allows us to confront that reality with strength and responsibility. That education needs to be face-to-face, and it needs to be now. Please support our call for in-person instruction and the complete return to our vital athletics and clubs.
Okay, next up is Jeff Weston, and then after that will be Kellen Brown.
To the School Board and Administration of District two hundred, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Weston. I am the father of five. They attend South, Edison, and Whittier. I am asking you to please and immediately bring back an in-person teaching option at the middle and high school levels. As I watch my eighth grader and sophomore sit at home learning alone in the room for hours upon end, I see how bored and disconnected they have become. I empathize with them. As a second grader, I became sick with a rare and serious disease. I was in the hospital for two weeks and spent another two weeks at home recovering. While my teachers did an amazing job offering up homework and assignments, and my parents did their best to help me learn and keep me, keep up with my schoolwork, nothing they could do even came close to replacing the ability of a teacher to inspire and motivate me in person. I recall being so frustrated, and I was only home for one month. For the social and emotional well-being of my oldest two kids, I want the option to have them back in school, being inspired by their teachers and fellow students. I've heard some of the same statistics that Eric said, so I will not repeat those, but they are alarming. From a logistics standpoint, my family is blessed to afford mostly reliable and fast internet. However, I have heard of families whose kids struggle to have a reliable connection through the day for e-learning. Just last week, even here in the school, my sophomore during a Zoom class noticed the school's internet go out. So the teacher was kicked out of the meeting. Another student took over as host and screen shared Wii bowling and trick shot videos for twenty minutes. It was funny, but it wasn't educational. E-learning is not the only viable option. Now, from a health standpoint, I understand that there is concern for students and teachers who are, who are at higher COVID risk themselves or who live with someone that is of high risk. What about families that do not have high-risk members at home? My parents are in their lower seventies and live two hours away. While they don't have underlying conditions, their age is a concern to them. So we have collectively made the choice to not interact. We have taken that health risk away by choice. Therefore, we should have the choice to have all five of our kids in school. In-person learning can and should be an option, just like e-learning. District two hundred School Board, Dr. Schuler, I appreciate all you do for our students. Please provide a viable in-person option. Thank you.
So next up is Kellen Brown, and then after that will be Amber Brown.
My name is Kellen Brown, and I am a junior at Weenworth South High School. From the time we started school, we were told how much fun our high school years would be. We've been looking forward to these years since the very beginning. My first two years at South were very good, and I was looking forward to my junior year. However, junior year is about so much more than just friends, activities, sports, and social events. Junior year is critical in preparation for college. I need to learn a lot of material in my classes this year, and I cannot do this effectively with remote learning. According to the CDC, as of September second, there had been a hundred deaths in people aged eighteen or younger in the United States. There are about seventy-three point six million people in the U.S. under the age of eighteen. This means the odds of a child dying from COVID nineteen is one in seven hundred thirty-five thousand nine hundred. Also, according to the CDC, during the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty flu season, there were a hundred and eighty-eight deaths due to the flu in children. This means the seasonal flu is more dangerous for students than COVID nineteen. So why are we not in class? The student body and teachers want to be back in the classroom. The students have no say in any of this. Why have we not been surveyed? Why do our opinions not matter? We deserve a high-quality in-person education, and you are denying us that opportunity. If we can sign a waiver that allows us to play sports, why can't we sign one stating that we understand the risks of COVID and will not sue the school? that we understand the risks of COVID and will not sue the school if we are exposed? Over 80% of the high school students were registered for in-person learning. Why are you not listening to us? The students that are at higher risk and are not comfortable attending in-person have the option to take classes online. The rest of us deserve the opportunity to be in-person. According to the National Safety Council, the odds of dying in an automobile accident are 1 in 106, which makes me 6,942 times more likely to die in a car accident than dying from COVID-19. I think I'll take my chances. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Amber Brown, and then after that, Patrick McCoyd.
My name is Amber Brown, and I have three students in Wheaton Warrenville South. However, I'm not here to speak for myself. I am reading a statement from one of your students. "I am a senior at Wheaton Warrenville South who surprisingly isn't here to talk about how worried I am about not getting to wear a homecoming dress this year, or my disappointment at the possibility of canceling our senior events that I heard about in second grade. I was diagnosed with severe depression and anxiety in 2018. My bipolar disorder was diagnosed earlier this year, and I fight with it every single day. I take medication every morning and every night to help control it, or at least I try to take them that consistently. My mother and boyfriend usually have to remind me because I forget everything. Only five in 10 kids between the ages of 3 and 17 have received treatment for their behavioral disorders this year, according to the CDC. Kids every day are going through the same things I do with an extremely different success rate that the quarantine, which comes with online school, is driving lower and lower. As loneliness is a prime symptom of depression, as well as certain kinds of anxiety, kids, especially my age, need the stimulation that connecting with another human being in-person gives you when battling with mental health. 4.5 million diagnosed kids in the USA are battling in our school systems today, along with millions who are still struggling alone. I don't see opening schools as an issue of politics, race, or religion. I see opening schools as a necessity for saving the lives, literally, of not only people living with mental incapacities that hinder me, but the ones just existing without the knowledge of theirs. I can tell you from experience that the feeling of being alone, or the sinking feeling of loneliness that comes with depression, without that in the back of your head every single time it enters. It is the question of what if this is forever? In opening back up again, we can do better than 50% of the kids receiving treatment. And hopefully, we recognize coronavirus entered as a pandemic on two fronts. While concerned about the physical, we can, we forget about the infections that we can't see. Suicides are up, and I personally don't see them going down with how things are continuing on. As a district, we need to do better helping the helpless, and as a start, we can try to bring back normal by bringing kids back to the school. And I promise you, as someone who knows, you will save more lives than any amount of masks can."
Thank you. So, after Patrick McCoyd will be Mike Brown.
Hello, my name is Patrick McCoyd. I have four children, two at South, two at Edison. And I'm actually here to talk to you tonight about how proud that you should be. I hope you had an opportunity to listen to the kids speak yesterday. They spoke with leadership. They spoke with poise. They were articulate. They persevered. They got a lot of flack on social media, and they took a stand. This is the environment and the kids that you have created at CUSD 200, right up until March of last year. And I understand in March, this was all our first global pandemic. I understand the shutdown then. It is now time to open back up. It is time to open back up safely, which we can do. Please show us the path forward to open up. We're behind you. If you need help, we will help. We have a lot of voices here. We'll go talk to anybody that we can. So again, it is time to open back up. Be proud of the kids who spoke yesterday. Be proud of what you created. We can do that again. Thank you very much, and it is time to roll.
Thank you. So, Mike Brown, and then after that would be Bart Banga, I believe? You gotta, you gotta wear it.
Hi, thank you, board. I'm Mike Brown. I have three great kids at South. We love South. We've had a good experience thus far. In Illinois, in my opinion, COVID cannot be a single factor that is tipping the scales away from in-person learning. We are all aware of the numbers, and to me, they don't make sense or support it. The other side of the scale weighs at 10, 100, 1,000 to 1. Here's a few examples. Social and peer interaction and development. Maintaining national academic standards. Abuse, depression, anxiety not being reported because they're not in school. Potential interests and talents going untapped. Destroying future opportunities that only arise from extracurricular activities that students are involved in. I could go on and on with this list, but I'm not going to bore you with it. I won't put people to sleep, but it's all important. These are the formative years of our children's development and currently is being taken away. I'm also an educator. As an adjunct professor at Elmhurst University, going on 10 years, having taught in both their MBA and Master's of Supply Chain program, I had to endure the switch online this spring. To date, it was the worst thing I've had to do as an instructor. Here's why. Being able to gauge if what is being taught is being absorbed, it can't happen online. Multifaceted approaches in learning instantly become one-dimensional. Being a traditional cohort setting class collaboration falls apart. Labs, projects, group presentations where interpersonal skills are developed were destroyed. The five minutes after class, that extra minute to explain something to someone who's just not getting it that night, okay? Questions I generally know in my material, when they should come, it's not there. The collaboration doesn't come from my students because I'm online. It's faceless. I can't imagine how much worse this must be at the high school, for the high school teachers and their students that really have not come into their own yet, or out of their shells, and aren't afraid to ask questions and look silly, okay? To conclude, we know you are trying, but please try harder. How do we help drive this with you? You are elected and represent us and our children, and thus far, we expect more. We are 80% the majority. Our 80% wants our kids back in school. If there is a concern about legality or repercussions, someone needs to think about the backside of this. Parents, in my mind, that have children with some talent, being in academic, sports, band, choir, et cetera, where it can no longer be highlighted and shown, is stealing from their future opportunities. If other states are doing this, then why aren't we? And can you combat that, this in court, if that was to occur? Thank you.
Thank you. So, next is Bart Banga, and then after, Gillen Woods, I believe?
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you. My name is Bart Banga. I have six kids, three in the district, two at Wheaton North, one at Franklin. My wife and I grew up here in Wheaton. Both went to Wheaton North High School. Seems like a lifetime ago, but my wife used to babysit for Jenna Erickson and her family. But let's start with, where did this happen? Initially, when COVID lockdown started, it was said to be 15 days to flatten the curve and not to overrun our hospitals. It was a lot of unknowns at the time, and it seemed reasonable to most people. But today is day 178 of the 15 days that we were told to slow the spread. Now hospitals are struggling. Many of them have even closed. So the data's out, and now it's up to critical thinkers to make good decisions to advocate for their children, which is probably why 80% of the parents are saying kids should be back in school, because they've looked at the data. Couple of data points, I won't repeat too many of them, but I think it does bear repeating. At Central DuPage Hospital, not one hospitalization under the age of 18. There've been 26,000 college kids that have contracted COVID, not one hospitalization. And so, when you think about that, there's going to be cases, but it's hospitalizations and deaths that I think we should be looking at. There's been over 1,000 high school football games and no COVID outbreak. There's schools all across the country that are opening, and they're having great success. There's private schools right in our area. Wheaton Christian Grammar School is on Week 3 of in-person, five-day-a-week learning. They have over 500 people in the school, not even one case. So, we believe that obviously you're trying to make the best decisions for our kids, but the data is really showing that we're on day 178 of the lockdown, and it doesn't seem like what's it going to take. So, here's some of the real risk factors that we've already talked about. Increase in suicides are up over 50%. You can't even get a mental health bed at a lot of facilities. So, so much for the main goal of not locking down, you know, not shutting down the hospitals. Anxiety's through the roof. Least privileged kids are getting hammered by not having the best Wi-Fi, and they could be left behind permanently. So what we'd ask you, in the words of John F. Kennedy when he talked about profiles and courage, I don't know why this seems to be a political issue to, very divisive issue to advocate for having kids in-school learning. But John F. Kennedy said, "Profiles encourage is going against the party for what's best for the country." We would ask you to have the profiles encouraged and go against whatever your party is to do what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Kelly Gillen Woods, and then after that is Brad Klausing.
Hi, I'm Kelly Gillenwater, and I'm not only a product of this district, I am the parent and the grandparent of children in this district. I have a senior at South, and I have a kindergartner at Bauer, both with multi-needs. There is no E, or equity in e-learning. There is no equality in e-learning. Currently, there are a handpicked group of special needs students in classes in this district at the middle school and high school level. I speak to you as a multi-needs parent whose child has epilepsy, and you are requiring him to sit at a computer screen for hours and hours and hours. It drains his brain. It exhausts him. It exasperates seizures. He is not alone. IEPs and 504 plans were written for in-person learning. According to the ADA, the modifications that are being offered are not equal. They are not equitable. Because when you go to e-learning, your needs change. As you have heard, we have numerous students with depression, anxiety, they're despondent, they're withdrawn. You've heard the statistics. These children do not have 504 plans or IEPs, but numerous of them definitely need it. You are letting us down, you're letting our children down. They are not getting the education that they need as the future of our country. We are not giving them the tools they need to go to college. My son sits at the screen and stares. He is a National Honor Society student. He has busted his butt to get where he is at now, against the odds, and he is not alone. How do you do a lab in class, or online and not in class? How do you become an engineer or a medical professional when you're sitting at a screen when you are not equipped to do so? Please, open back up. We are immunocompromised people, and our whole entire family, and every one of my son's team of doctors says, he needs to be in-person. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Klausing, and then after that, I have Becca Hoenstein again? No? Okay. So after that would be Leslie Escobar.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Klausing. My wife Kate and I grew up in Wheaton, both graduates of Wheaton Warrenville South High School. Love our town, love the school district, and we have four kids in the school district right now, two of which are at Weasbrooke and in-person learning, the other two which are at Hubble during the e-learning. And as a parent, I can tell you, there's a distinct difference in the eyes of those kids that are in-person and the excitement for their, basically for their schooling. And I apologize, I've never been to one of these meetings before. We have been so thrilled with District 200 and the experience we've had. We've left it all up to you all to keep things running well, but I felt this was time to speak up, and I was so proud of those kids that came to that rally last night and stood up for getting back to in-person learning. And I can tell you, my two junior hires are just not into e-learning. It's hard for them to focus, and I feel that the younger the child is, the more difficult it is for them to follow along, and the more informative those years and those friendships are, especially those junior high years, where they're figuring out who they are and what they're going to be and what they're all about. And being in sports and with teachers and with their friends are instrumental in forming those young children as they keep moving up through the school system. I feel like we have an opportunity right now to get our school back open, get our schools back open, be creative, and figure this out. I feel like this is going to be a defining moment in our town and in our district for the haves and have-nots. You know, our kids are lucky enough to have, my wife's a teacher, she was a teacher, and she's home with the kids. She can help them with questions. We have good internet. They have good places to study, and it's a struggle for them. And I can't imagine what some of the other kids in our district are going through right now, so I'm very passionate about getting these kids back. I think this is just going to be a bigger, bigger wedge in the haves and have-nots in this town. I would just ask you, what, what are we fearing here? Is it litigation? Are the teachers pushing back? Are the families pushing back? Because from what I'm hearing from teachers, they want to be back. The families want to be back by the 80 to 20 margin. And if it is in fact fear, maybe we can get creative, like the private schools have, hire additional counsel, require contracts to attend, and just make something work. We're trying to teach our kids to be creative, think on their own, look out for others, and solve problems. Let's lead by example and figure out how to succeed this year, allow our succeeding students to succeed along with us. Other schools and states are doing this. Let's not leave our kids behind. We don't have an option. Thank you.
Okay, Leslie Escobar, and then after that would be Harold Longs.
Good evening. I didn't know I was going to speak. I signed up, but the reason I'm here is because I'm very upset because the schools, the kids are not going to school. You know, we are, you know, like being Hispanic is difficult because parents have to go to work. They cannot afford to pay babysitters, so kids are staying at their home by themselves. And sometimes, you know, like today I had an example. I went to visit my mom, and she was watching my niece. She's in first grade. And she was playing Roblox. And the teacher asked her, okay, kids, this class is over, and do you have any questions? Okay, no questions. Okay, I see you tomorrow. And that was it. What the kids are learning, they're not learning anything because they are by themselves. And I think kids need to be, go back to school. In my house, the internet is not working sometimes, so my daughter gets very frustrated because the internet doesn't work. And so, she told the teacher, oh, you know, the internet was low, so I couldn't get to the class. And the teacher told her, okay, that's your problem. You solve it yourself. And that's a problem, you know? There are some teachers that care about education, but some of them are not. And we need your support to get the kids back to school. Because it does, there's no future like that. I don't think in China, they wasting time with the kids. They are getting educated. Our kids are here playing Xbox all day, playing games. So they need to get busy and going back to school. Thank you, and we hope.
Thank you. Harold Longs. Harold Longs. And then after that is our last speaker, Ron. I can't make that out. If you're, Ron's after Harold Longs here.
Good evening. Harold Longs, I'm a parent, I live in District 200. I have two kids at Wheaton North. First of all, I'd like to thank Chris for changing the agenda tonight, modifying it so we could get to the meat of what everybody's here to listen to about schools. So thank you again, Chris. Last night I did attend the rally. There was a huge turnout. I'd say there was several hundred people. I'd say there was several hundred people there, and when the kids were speaking, I could tell you it was very silent, and everybody could hear it very clearly. I also did all the points made before me. I do agree we need to get the kids back in school. I would like to hear, at least on a weekly basis, what's going on in the elementary schools. We do have, you know, the 13 schools open, and I'd like to know what kind of illnesses and any kind of issues we've been having since school's been open for the week. And I definitely think we should, you know, survey the parents again, see if we get the high school and middle school kids back into the classroom. Because I could tell you for my kids, they miss going to school. Some of the issues that have come up, as far as I've seen, as many teachers are struggling with the technology as far as my kids are concerned, class times are way too short, and students are not being engaged. And also, I asked my kids for a couple notes today about what they've gone through, especially the last day or two, not the first day, and I got to read them. They wrote a little tiny for me. They said here, one of the positives, answers all the questions, willing to meet any time after or before classes. Negatives, relies on videos to teach bulk of the materials, and no face-to-face time. Another one is, you know, they're happy that they do something different every day in class, and then the teacher only cares about herself, she doesn't hear the other students making any comments, and never checks her random box for questions. Another one is positive, get materials across very well, respects time and interesting. And one of my kids have self-defense, she says it's just not working. And the other one, you know, it's been mixed either way, so some classes are similar to online. And I'd just like to make one last point. I know the district and in the past when it came to, when the state was changing the state school budgets and funding, you guys got together and you reached out to parents and all the school districts and teachers and everybody else to write letters and push the state to make changes. I think it's time for us now to do the same thing and reach out to the state, the governor and the legislators and the people, you know, regulating the school boards and change these guidelines and just allow the, give us a chance to open the schools up since there's been no huge increase in illnesses since the elementary schools in this district and other districts in the area have opened up in the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
And the last person is Ron. Is there a Ron here that signed up to speak?
Might be in the auditorium.
Yeah, maybe in the auditorium. We'll wait a moment here. I can't read the last name, so. Okay, we will, so thanks, everybody, for speaking. Appreciate the passion, appreciate the perspective of the students. We hear you. That's what I can say. We all hear you, we all feel the pain, and we're going to do our best to accomplish what you need and what everybody needs. So there were some community members not attending the meeting in person also had a chance to provide comments to the Board of Education. They had the opportunity to send an email to the board between the posting of this agenda on Friday and 5:00 today. All board members have received and will or already have read these emails. It is noted on our posted agenda that these emails were to include in the subject line that they were intended to be acknowledged at the September 9th, 2020 Board of Education meeting. These emails will be acknowledged but not read in their entirety, and they will be placed in the board communication log as a matter of public record. We did receive three emails from Tracy Kantowski, Shawna Smith, and Lex Berta, all in the last couple of days, all around reopening feedback. So we've acknowledged those, and those will be in the communication log, which will be approved at the next board meeting. So thank you for your understanding of the need for this temporary procedure for the September 9th meeting and for your interest in providing feedback to the Board of Education. Next, we will move to our superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler, I know you have a few things.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Paulson. Just a couple of things I want to mention under my report this evening because I know we're going to spend quite a bit of time on the reopening plan tonight. Number one is, I wanted to thank Stephanie Mangini, who gave us the report from Host School this evening. I know all board members, as well as some members of the community, had an opportunity to join us for a ribbon cutting at the new Early Learning Center. Amazing facility, and as much as the facility itself is amazing, the work that Stephanie and her team are doing in the school for our students in our community is even more amazing. So Stephanie, thank you for the brick from the original building. I remember the day watching that, the original building come down, and it's amazing to see what the new facility brings. Also wanted to mention that we got an email from the American Heart Association recognizing Jessica Peterson, recognizing Stephanie and Debbie Klein, principal at Emerson, along with two teachers, Jen Wecker and Terry Donahue, for the support that they've given to the American Heart Association through the Kids' Heart Challenge program. Jess wrote a really nice email thanking Stephanie and Debbie and staff for the support of that program. And then finally, under the report tonight, and we're going to go into this a little bit deeper under the school reopening update, I would be remiss if I did not mention and thank everybody for getting the school year started in District 200. I know that we obviously are here tonight on our agenda to continue to talk about what learning opportunities exist, but opening 15 facilities for in-person instruction was no small feat at the beginning of this year. Our principals did an amazing job in getting our buildings ready. Charlie and his team in Human Resource did a ton of last-minute hiring and reorganizing of staff to get staff into the places that they needed to be. We reassigned a lot of our staff from the middle and the high schools, especially the health office and support functions, to our elementary buildings. And we're going to provide some data. I think one of the questions that came up under public comment was what did we experience in the first six days? And we're going to provide that information under the discussion and report tonight. It was not without challenges or issues in the first six days, but again, just an incredible effort of the entire district to get the school year started. We also started the year at the elementary level with 1,300 students in the Virtual Academy. Danielle Moran and her team did an incredible job of getting the Virtual Academy, which didn't even exist, at the beginning of the summer up and operating. And again, admittedly, nothing has been without challenges that we've continued to and will continue to work through, but six days in, and certainly we're continuing to go, so.
Okay. Dr. Schuler, any questions or comments from board members? Rob?
I know we all have said it many times and believe it, but we didn't say it tonight, which is without the community, that building would not have been possible. So thanking the community as well for supporting the creation of that building is really important. And then secondly, I just wanted to also say, and I said to some folks outside earlier, I'm really impressed with the students who show up and advocate for whatever their opinion is. If they have the courage to stand up and advocate and take feedback and heat from their peers, that's so impressive to me. So I just want to say thank you to the students for doing that. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Rob. I think we all agree with that, all those comments. Anybody else? All right, we will move on. As we mentioned earlier, we have adjusted our agenda to move up the topic, one of the topics of the night, which is the District 200 school reopening plan for the 2020-21 school year. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Schuler and team.
Great, thank you, Mr. Paulson. So as I'm waiting on the presentation to come up, just a little bit of context for the discussion tonight, and Mr. Hamlin, I certainly appreciate what you shared in terms of our students. There's been no doubt throughout the summer that we've had a lot of advocacy on the topic of reopening schools, right? A lot of different thoughts, opinions, lots of opportunities to support and help in our planning. And I do, I guess I want to mention at the onset that from the beginning, we approached this challenge of reopening schools with the goal of reopening our schools, right? As we took on the initial guidance, in just a minute, I'm going to go through a timeline just to remind the board of some of the key events that got us to where we are today. But from the very beginning of the summer, that's been our one goal, and we have run into lots of obstacles, and at each of those turns, we've problem-solved, worked with our teams to develop solutions to those problems. So on the timeline, it's a little difficult to see on the size of the screen. Again, I just want to take the board back to June 23rd and 26th. That was the point in the summer significantly into, obviously, the planning process where the Illinois State Board of Education and IDPH issued their joint guidance for the reopening of schools. And important to note, because I think there's been some question about what is our obligation to follow guidance, right, that sits around reopening? We have an obligation to adhere to all guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education. They do issue governing guidance for school districts, and everything that's been issued in the reopening plans has happened jointly between IDPH and ISB. I think the question that was asked even earlier tonight of what is our legal obligation around that guidance? As the board is aware, we did ask our legal team for an opinion on that. What is our obligation? And we're very, very clearly told we follow that guidance. And we've stated from the start that we will follow the guidance from IDPH as we build those reopening plans. And so we worked through the summer, and July 8th, we presented our reopening plans for the first time that offered the in-person opportunity at the elementary level, five days a week, and the hybrid plan middle and high school with the option of the Virtual Academy. We provided an update at the end of July and an update again on August the 12th, but the board might remember on that August 12th meeting was where we did share that a new guidance document had come out that day with some updates from the Illinois Department of Public Health that did not impact our ability to open a school, but certainly had significant impact on, at least in our opinion, and I think the opinion of a lot of school districts that altered plans, our ability to keep our schools open. They issued some new guidance around definition of close contact, some new guidance around symptom, and what is the impact of a student or staff member demonstrating a symptom in terms of the amount of time that they would be out of school. There was some new guidance around when a symptomatic student or staff member presents. What do we need to do in terms of shutting down building or portion of a building for the purpose of cleaning to be able to then reintegrate students into that classroom? There were legitimate hurdles in terms of our ability, or at least our concern and our ability to keep schools open. And so we did make the decision on August the 14th to readjust our elementary day. We actually shortened our elementary day, took some of the points in our elementary day out where students were moving significantly in the building, where students were mixing with students outside of their cohort class. So we readjusted, shortened the day to actually simplify that model at the elementary level, and we shifted our middle and high schools to remote learning to start the school year. And so that's kind of, that's where we were as of the start of school. I think as Mr. Paulson mentioned at the start, we were focused after August the 14th on getting the school year started, on making sure that our buildings, especially the 15 buildings that were operating with in-person instruction, that our buildings were staffed, and that we had training opportunities, protocols in place for our staff. That's been our focus as we got the school year started. What we're going to provide for the board tonight, which is really around this question of what is the timeline and criteria for return to in-person instruction at the secondary level? We're going to focus the update on three areas that I think are critically important as we look at how we answer that question. One, how is the experience going at the elementary level? So in our 15 facilities where we have students in person, what are we seeing in terms of our ability to offer continuity of instruction and programs in those buildings? Two, we're going to take the board through the DuPage County Health Department Return to School Framework that was issued at the end of August, and share with the board where we sit from the health department perspective around our community transmission metrics. And then three, identify some of the plan adjustments that we are making as we prepare for that return to in-person when we can clear those first two hurdles, assuming that's where the board sits. One last piece that I just want to clearly mention before I turn it over to Dr. Sloggy to walk us through the first of those three updates. So it was mentioned earlier tonight around the fact that there are a lot of different governmental entities that have been involved in discussion on school reopening, that have issued guidance, have issued those pieces. I accept and I acknowledge, both for the board and certainly for our community members that are here, the decision to close schools is a decision that rests with the local school district as we make that decision. Obviously, back in March, the governor issued through an emergency order, a declaration to close all schools, but at the point in summer where we made that change on August the 14th, that's a local decision. We made it based on information and guidance that we have, but I want to be really clear that that is a local decision. We accept that responsibility, and I think have been clear to the board about the fact that decisions now to reopen, while we will continue to follow all partners, those are local decisions as well, right, as we continue to move forward. So with that said, as an introduction, I'm going to invite Dr. Sloggy up to take the board through some of what we've experienced at the elementary level.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Really excited to give you an in-person school update this evening, and I know Mrs. Mangini alluded to this, and Dr. Schuler did. I just want to start with a thank you to our entire District 200 team. And if I tried to individualize one particular group, I'd probably miss a group. This has been a labor of love and gratitude and hard work to bring our elementary students back. And so just being part of that team, having an opportunity to lead within that work, but also be surrounded by leaders at every single level, from our superintendent to our board, our senior leadership team, our principals, our community, our teachers, our elementary union leadership, who we've worked really, really closely with, our health staff, our health department chair, Sue Vasco. I'm just so gracious, and I'm just so thankful for our students. So I want to thank all those that are part of our District 200 team that have made this opportunity possible for our kids. Just a quick recap of what the in-person day right now looks like for elementary students. Our doors open at 9:00 a.m., and we offer in-person instruction for our elementary students daily. So kids have the opportunity to come to school every single day. That school day goes until 1:00. As Dr. Schuler mentioned before, we did shift our plan. We originally had a our plan. We originally had a plan that would run 9:30 to 3:30 on August 12th, when some of that new guidance was released. We removed lunch, recess, and PE, and some of our specials from that schedule to reduce the time and transitions, because our goal is not only to open, but we want to stay open for our kids for in-person instruction. And this allowed us to have greater cohort management. As you can see here, 73% of our students opted for in-person learning. So 73% of our families opted for in-person learning, 27% opted for virtual learning. So just at the elementary level, our 13 elementary schools, that's about 3,670 students in in-person, and our virtual is roughly over 1,300 students. So what was the first day like? I know some of you or many of you were out of our buildings. For me, it was amazing, right? Tuesday, September 1st, we had the opportunity to welcome back our students into our buildings for the first time in over 170 days. So it was a very happy day. You see one of our students there with a thumb up. I guarantee she's smiling underneath that mask. It was just a really, really great day. We've heard a lot of positive feedback and the opportunity to connect with kids. So I thought I would put some pictures in there. Obviously, we got some new protocols in place, but to have kids back was just a joy. And really, our focus over this first week, and now moving into our second week, has been on classroom community. So our kids are really with their classroom for most all of the day. We have really worked to limit major transition points. So one of our organizational values that's key district-wide is relationships and student connectedness. And that's certainly a focus within our classrooms, is connecting with kids, right? That time from 9:00 to 1:00 is continuous time together in person. We have removed many of the movements out of the place. So that classroom community is together for that whole time. So the focus on connecting and being a group is really, really important. Health and safety is always an important part of our elementary experience. Obviously, right now, it's really, really important. So a few things that were different, where we, as you saw, we did a lot of preseason videos, coaching and teaching from the principal perspective. Prior to the school year, you saw some of the YouTube lives that Mrs. Lakkeneal put together to prepare our students. But then, as our kids came back, we had an SEL team and a health team that put together a video and lessons for our kids to teach them about how do we handle school when we're coming into the classroom? What are the things that we do to make sure that we're safe, right? And truthfully, again, this is all underneath the goal of working together to stay safe, but also to stay open. And then lastly, learning, right? As we think about our elementary piece and that building that classroom community, the focus is on learning. And so within that four hours, being continuous, and really the only breaks being an opportunity to step outside for mask breaks or a movement break, we really have that continuous time together to focus on core academic skills in the core academic subjects. Math, reading, writing, the foundational skills, science, social studies. So the school experience is still allowing our kids to be in person and get those instructional minutes in. I mentioned one of the things, though, that is different, obviously, is we want to get our kids outside to get their mask off, or their face covering off, and take that break. We also not having specials during the day for the in-person piece. Many of our specialists will pop into the classroom, talk about the lesson that the kids may be doing outside of the school day, or provide a movement break right in the classroom. So this has been a part of our game as well, as we brought our kids back. Mr. Farley's team worked really, really hard to make sure we had tents at all of our buildings in the case of inclement weather, or to provide shade for those mask breaks, for the kids to have snacks and some of those pieces as well. So I told you it's been joyous. We've had a lot of gratitude. It's been a lot of hard work. And on that same end, our daily activity, our daily work in our buildings, also does focus many times on responding and managing health-related issues. This doesn't come as a surprise to us. I think we were prepared for this at this point, right? So daily, we're collaborating with our health staff, our principals, our teachers, our facilities department. We're in continuous communication around how we're managing different health-related issues, cleaning issues, and some of those pieces, right? We were very fortunate at the beginning of the school year, and Dr. Shuler mentioned this earlier, Dr. Kyle worked tirelessly with our secondary level to redeploy some staff. Allowed us to open even more comfortably at the elementary level, to have those support staff either riding buses, or on hand to help kids get to the right place as we started the school year. We're very thankful for that. And all along, we've adhered to the guidance that's been put forth from our various health departments. And adhering to that guidance, right, we talked about what are the numbers? What do we look like as we've opened up our schools, right? And so when we follow that guidance and we look at this, this has September 1st, our opening date through September 8th. We've had, over that time, 75 students have been sent home who were demonstrating at least one COVID-like symptom. So right now, the guidance will tell us that if there is a student demonstrating a COVID-like symptom, that they will require an alternative diagnosis or a negative test. So 75 of those students, and you know that that is an exhaustive list that we have to follow, right? We also have 42 students that are quarantining outside of school. That's not because of close contact that they've had within our school setting, but either maybe they have a parent, or a grandma, or a friend, or somebody that they were in close contact with outside of school. So we have 42 that are quarantining outside of school right now for a close contact. And then our staff, right? Really important that we are staffed, and we really are trying to limit the amount of staff that are quarantining through the practices and processes we have in place. We have 10 certified staff at the elementary level that are quarantining due to a close contact outside of school. So they may have had a close contact with somebody outside of school. To date, confirmed positive COVID cases at the elementary level, we have two elementary students, their family members, their siblings, that are confirmed positive COVID-19 cases, and one of our classified staff members. So that's where our numbers sit right now. I think, you know, in all these pieces, our protocols at the elementary level have really been around six-foot physical distancing when we get into that process where there's a confirmed or suspected case. Some of the first pieces for contact tracing that they ask is, who is within six feet of this person for a duration of 15 minutes, which can be cumulative? And so our processes and limiting those transitions, all those different pieces that we have in place, we want to make sure that we stick to, we don't let our guard down, because again, we want to be safe, but we also want to stay open. You know, some words were coming to mind when I was thinking about us being able to provide this experience for our early childhood students, our students that are transitioning, our students, some of our students with IEPs, and then obviously our elementary students. So first of all, I started with gratitude, and I'm, again, thankful and humbled by that. There's been a tremendous amount of work from our teachers and all of our staff, a lot of hard work, and not only in preparing for it, but the work they're putting in daily to connect and meet our kids' needs. And it's all centered around putting our kids first, giving our kids what they need. And I think that that comes from a place of love. And because of that, I think our kids are experiencing joy. But also, as an adult and as a leader, and our teachers, I think that they're experiencing joy as well. And that is because of the opportunity to connect together. So before we transition into the Health Department Return to School Framework, I know I gave you kind of a lot of information there. I'll stop and take any questions before we transition on.
Chris, can I just, one piece, if you go back to slide to the, one more slide, right? So, no, I'm sorry, right where you're at, in terms of the numbers. So again, just practical impact, and again, as we walk through the situation, right? Reason why I think we're starting with the elementary experience is that, A, we need to know that this is sustainable at a much simpler model, right? And that, I think, is an important hurdle to clear, to know that we can then do this at the secondary level. So the number on the top, students sent home, requiring an alternate diagnosis, recognize as well that when a student leaves school with a COVID-like symptom, that classroom has to be moved, right? So student demonstrates one of those symptoms, goes to the health office, right, to be seen by the health office staff in the evaluation room. If it's determined that the symptom that's taking them out of school is a COVID symptom, that entire classroom has to be moved, so that the classroom can be cleaned before students return into that setting. And so, again, that's been manageable thus far at the elementary level, because we have the space to be able to move classrooms and then move them back. But that's where there's that connection to when we talked about the cleaning protocol and the need to, especially with a COVID symptom or a positive case, to have a classroom sit vacant ideally for 24 hours. It's for the purpose of carrying out the cleaning protocol. Jennifer?
Question. So even if it's just a symptom, not that they've been confirmed that they have it, but if there's a symptom and they're removed, that entire class has to be moved? So where, what has happened in this case? Where are we moving them to? What's our capacity for that?
Christian, want to talk about that?
Yeah, for the significant pieces, so like a cough, a fever on the COVID list, right? We've been, or sore throat, we have been able to move them to like a gym space, an LLC space, to do the cleaning piece.
So is that for the remainder of the day, or for what?
Could be during the day. If it's after, we're doing deep cleaning. So you do have the opportunity to come back in the following piece, because we're following the deep cleaning already. But yeah, we've had to find alternative spaces within the building.
So, again, just so I'm clear, I'm not trying to mislead. We've not cleaned out 75 classrooms, because some of the symptomatic students have left at the end of the school day, where students were already leaving, and then the space is getting cleaned as well. But if it is early enough in the day when students are still there, and it is one of the symptoms on that checklist, then we're executing that cleaning protocol.
So they don't come back? Is that correct?
No. So in that case, the student that leaves, they do not come back until they have gone to see a doctor, and have either an alternate diagnosis from the doctor, or a COVID test, or if they don't get either, they stay out for 10 days for what would be the isolation period.
And the same thing would happen should it be a staff member?
Correct.
Do we have adequate amount of substitutes right now?
We do right now, certainly at the elementary level. So again, when we talk about staff that have been redeployed, we've redeployed all of our permanent substitutes from the secondary level to the elementary level, as well as some of our support staff. So I'm fully confident in where we sit right now at the elementary level in terms of our ability to do it. But again, when we get to that point that we've kind of cleared the hurdle and start to reopen the secondary schools, a lot of that staff's going to have to go back to, obviously, the middle and high school.
And then, and maybe I'm jumping ahead here, but should, if we had, say, our high school open right now, somebody got five periods through the day, showed, went down to the nurse's office, had a fever, five classrooms would then, because they had been in those classrooms, would have to find alternate placement?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can you, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Can you remind me again, when we do tracing, and we identify those who did come in contact with that student, what happens to those students?
So any student who's determined to be a close contact, then we contact student and family, and they begin the quarantine period. So it's a 14-day quarantine period. Again, I want to, you know, mention at the elementary, so the one situation where we've had thus far with two confirmed cases, it did not result in any other students being quarantined, because students were only in the one classroom, and all the desks are spaced six feet apart. And so there were no other students deemed to be a close contact. So in that particular situation, we did not have any other students that were quarantined.
Thank you.
On the subject of substitutes, so if we're, I'm jumping ahead a little bit here, too, but if we were to go into secondary, or in school, and let's see, an AP chemistry teacher, or a French teacher, needs to quarantine, or God forbid, become sick. So that person is out for 10 to 14 days. Would we be able to cover that type of subject with a substitute for that extended period of time?
Dr. Kyle, you want to?
Yeah, well, we planned for that, and depending on how sick that person is, if they could still do their job, we might reverse stream in some of those hard-to-fill spots like Calc AB, Calc BC, some of those pieces that we wouldn't have subs, depending on the level or severity of their COVID. We would let them reverse stream in with somebody supervising the kids.
Thank you.
One reminder again, and maybe this, maybe Jim, you and I can chat. We allocated an extra million dollars. Was that out of our reserve, right?
Yes.
Yeah, to address these issues. Capacity, additional PPE, additional equipment, subs, all the other stuff we need, right?
Yeah, yes, definitely. And the majority of new staff that you hired within the district were at the elementary level. So I recognize to run the in-person experience at the elementary level with the size classes that you have for the in-person, we did have to hire significant additional staff, because we're obviously still staffing the virtual academy program. So we hired a lot of new certified staff. We were able to cover some of those positions with non-certified positions that we did not use at other levels. But that's what's largely chewing up the contingency money you built into the budget this year.
Thank you.
The question I have is, you know, I guess, why is this work at elementary, and not at the high school and so on? I think you addressed that a bit. But it's because we have space. And that space was created by 27%, I think it was, of students electing virtual academy. So that freed up the space for us to be able to move, you know, place the kids in the buildings, right?
Yeah, I think that's certainly one factor, Mr. Matson. Absolutely. The virtual academy piece helped lower our enrollments. And then, as Dr. Shuler alluded to, we hired more staff. And then we also redeployed many of our specialists as well, so that we could adhere to the physical distancing requirements.
Okay. So just to be clear, then, if we redeployed people, that concerns me a little again at the high school level, and I know we haven't quite got there yet. But if we were to reopen, and I'm not sure what reopening means, and I'll talk about that later, but if we reopened at high school and middle school upper grades, we would have to, again, redeploy the teachers the other way, no?
Yes. I mean, we would need to move staff back to their home buildings at the secondary levels. So again, let me be clear, we had the luxury, based on how we started the school year, of deploying additional staff to our elementary buildings. Not sure exactly how and if we would need them. So again, part of the evaluation experience, I would say, even though the numbers are there, we've been successful through the first week of doing that. But we need to see that we can sustain that over a couple of weeks without some of the staff that would have to be deployed back to the middle and high school level. So we have to be able to run our elementary schools with less staff than we have currently. Not classroom teaching staff. We're not going to take any classroom teachers available. Where we've talked about redeploying staff, we've moved campus monitors to the elementary level. We've moved additional health office staff, our nurses, to the elementary level. We redeployed staff to supervise bus routes and, you know, push some of the, so a lot of those are the staff that are going to go back to the middle and high school when we resume in-person instruction at those levels.
Okay. So there wouldn't be, quote, instructional staff taken away from, if you want to call it that, based on what you're describing?
Yeah, we would not take a classroom teacher away from an elementary building, nor would we take like a reading specialist or an English learner teacher away.
I also heard about, you know, some of the health and mental concerns about, you know, the students at the high school level and middle school level. And I'm concerned that that, and in that same vein too, there's seems to be some technology issues that I heard tonight being mentioned in the commentary. And I'm a little, I want to make sure we don't forget about the virtual academy. And I would hope, I'm curious whether the technology problems are being encountered at that level. And then how are we dealing with all the mental and health and all the other related issues that were brought up tonight for middle school stu, I mean, well, middle or elementary at the, that are doing virtual academy, particularly in light of the fact that once elected, you know, we don't, we're not allowing children to go back. And one comment I heard near the end there was that it sounded like an elementary student was at home and not getting overview care to work effectively. Maybe I misunderstood the, I think it was the second to the last speaker. And, you know, is everyone aware that the virtual academy exists or if, you know, or elementary is in person? I, it kind of confused my understanding of what was going on. But I'd like to have us follow up with that individual to make sure that's a known event.
Sure.
But, you know, again, going back to, you know, the question about that mental health, welfare of the virtual academy students, I mean, and how, is that a concern in the technology?
Yeah, I can take the mental health one. Certainly, I mean, first and foremost, it starts with connection. So I think at the virtual academy at the elementary level, those teachers are working really hard to connect with students in a virtual environment. And, you know, even as we transitioned to that last March, we immediately shifted our focus to are our kids dialed in? Are they online? Are they feeling connected? So I think that's the first piece. Obviously, we've taken all of our social emotional learning curriculum and we've taken that and put it into a virtual environment too to adapt it so we can hit some of those tier one pieces. But certainly that's an ongoing piece that we want to continue to work at and tackle when we look at the virtual academy piece. But again, it's taking relationships and then taking the core social emotional learning pieces and addressing it. We also have social work services allocated there, right? So we still have processes to report things like neglect, DCFS pieces, all those other, all those other things that are in play. Those protocols still lie in the virtual environment as well.
Now, why doesn't that work at the high school then? I mean, again, I'm hearing a lot of that tonight. And I'm going to tell you that I'm concerned about friends of mine that don't go to school anymore, believe it or not, that are, you know, also depressed and so on, that because of COVID. And it's very damaging to their mentality and so on. So, you know, again, I'm, I don't want to, I want to distinguish if possible and/or can we address at the high school and middle school level that big concern? And it is certainly a concern.
Yeah. Again, I would bring it back to, I would bring it back to three critical factors that you're trying to achieve in in-person or virtually. Connection, right? So connecting virtually versus connecting in-person, right? Sense of community, sense of community virtually versus sense of community in-person, right? And then the ability to participate or be connected to something outside of the school, whether that be an extracurricular, a sport, maybe it's something that you're involved with in your church or some of those pieces. I mean, those are three pieces, whether in a virtual or in-person, that are challenges and opportunities for us. They're things that we monitor, that we look at, that we put a lot of our efforts into. I think I spent the past two years talking about school connectedness, right? That's at the forefront of my mind all the time, no matter what piece we're in. So I think those three factors you're trying to get at in a virtual environment and in-person, and there's challenges and opportunities with both of those, right?
I think again, maybe if we have some town hall meetings, we have to help educate parents on some of those issues as well. Because I heard a lot of comments tonight about that concern. And we need to get them over to the hurdle as well. I don't know whether, when, you know, I'm not certain what in-person, you know, is yet, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. But, you know, there's still going to be an aspect of, potentially an aspect of virtual learning going on, non-connectivity, no matter what we do, if we don't, if we go to a hybrid model, I guess, versus fully open. And I'm not even sure how we could ever do that at this point. And this could go on a while. So I don't know, you know, maybe it goes on for a month hopefully, or three weeks, but it could go on six months as well. So I think we need to be able to address that and help satisfy some of those understandings.
One of the things too, from the high school level, just so you're aware, because I work directly with the high schools, we've been working with other assistant principals and teachers and teams of experts, social work sites, counselors get together. They look and see which kids have logged in, which kids have not been logging in. They're tracking those students down daily. They're already putting together plans of some of the students that just aren't doing well and how can we bring them in. So those are some things we're working on right now. Obviously, we learned a lot from March to now, but at the high school level, they're looking at, just like they would do if we were in school, they're looking at kids and trying to see which kids logged in, which kids didn't, which ones are engaged, which ones aren't. We're just as concerned as everybody in the audience as well as the board about making sure we capture and making sure we engage all our students. So at the high school level, I could just speak that we're already looking at, there might be students that we have to bring back in because they're not doing well out. So we are working on that.
So that's a potential is what I'm hearing, that we might bring in either classes or some number of students that are not performing. Okay. Great. Thank you.
So I think maybe in a future meeting, it might be worth having an oral report on just the virtual academies. You know, we talked a lot about the in-person elementary. I think it'd be worth a good conversation here just to review how that's going. And then just the other thing that I wanted to make sure everybody understood is that all those cleaning practices, you know, sending kids home, sending teachers, you know, quarantine, that's all embedded in the guidelines from the IDPH that we have to operate within. So that's, all that discussion we had about what we have to do is embedded in those guidelines that were issued to us on August 12th. So that's where that, those are compartmentalized into that, into that document.
I like that idea about the virtual academy because I think that, you know, what I've seen, and I've talked to a number of people that are doing that in the elementary level, and I'm finding that, you know, I think they're approaching it differently, the parents are. They're supportive of it. They made that decision to do that and that, you know, it pervades to the children as well. So, you know, that's an important process here that we all support those that are not in classroom or in person. So, you know, and that, again, I'm real pleased what I'm hearing back on the virtual academy.
I have one more question about in-person. I know there was a lot of talk this summer and parents were concerned about kids wearing masks. Are we having any problems with compliance in our elementary students and keeping their masks on in class and not?
No, really haven't heard much, Mrs. Crabtree. No, you know, our kids have been very resilient. Obviously, the mask breaks are helping. So our teachers are pretty dialed into that and we've been very purposeful around providing those breaks. But, you know, yesterday we had quite a rainy day. But no, I have not heard a lot of feedback out of that. Obviously, we have some few isolated situations and we have a process to address that. But on the whole, it's been very positive and haven't heard a lot of challenges around it.
Can I ask a few more questions about your numbers here?
Yeah.
So if we've had 75 kids sent home, how has that been spread over the 15 buildings that we've opened?
Yeah, I think pretty evenly, right? So when you, when you look at the 13 buildings, you're looking at anywhere from two to at our highest. And so a range of that amongst our buildings. Kids going home for various symptoms, anything from a stomach ache, right, to a fever, right? So some are able to immediately get an alternative diagnosis that allows them to come back. Maybe it's strep throat, maybe it's allergies, others may be awaiting a test.
I have a question too, just about the symptoms that they're showing. I've been confused every time I've looked at these guidelines about whether it's both a negative diagnosis and, or an alternative diagnosis and a negative test, or whether it's an either-or. Also, when it comes to something, the one that bothers me the most is the seasonal allergies. I don't even have seasonal allergies, but I blow my nose all the time. These masks make my nose run. But I have no reason to believe I'm sick. So if a student has seasonal allergies, and as we're talking about the older kids and bringing them back, two of my four kids have seasonal allergies like clockwork. If a doctor's been treating a child for years and we know this is common and it happens every year, is there any way for kids like that, under the guidance that we're operating under, to be able to proactively go to their doctor and say, this is a seasonal allergy patient, they're going to be congested, their nose is going to run, you know, and if it's the same as what we're always seeing, there's no reason to exclude them?
Yeah, we've actually had some of that, right? That some proactive seasonal allergy pieces that have, you know, given us that alternative diagnosis. I think the piece that we've probably seen come into play is if somebody has seasonal allergies and it's beyond that, or it's something that's extra beyond that and we don't have a medical certification on that. That's where really the evaluation of the nurse and the house staff comes into play and where there, there's almost that evaluation piece coming into play. But we have had, that has many of our alternative diagnosis.
And to your first question, it is an either-or. Either a note from a doctor or a negative test.
Okay. All right. Move on to the next, second part of this three-part presentation.
So the second thing that we wanted to spend a little bit of time with the board to help you understand is the DuPage County Health Department Return to School Framework. This was released the end of August, actually August the 28th. And I put the website link up there. Board members, you do also have a version of this in your green folder and the full-size packet as well. But impetus of the Return to School Framework at the county level was that the Illinois Department of Public Health did issue a document that they called an adaptive pause document. So it was a framework to help schools look at, at what point, based on community transmission metrics, does a school and/or district need to take what they called an adaptive pause from in-person learning? That could be as short as a week, could be as long as an extended period of time. And the DuPage County Health Department attempted to operationalize this through putting in place the specific metrics that helped to determine whether we were at a minimal, moderate, or substantial community transmission level. And if you go forward, you know, I can be able to read this up here, which is why I gave you the bigger one, and I apologize for this. But the connection within the framework is that certain models of how you operate school, in other words, how you're organized, how often kids move, do they move outside of cohort groups that they're with? The more movement, the more mixing, the more, let's call it complicated, that your school structure is, the lower the level of community transmission needs to be to comfortably sustain that model. And so if you look in the three columns of minimal, moderate, and substantial community transmission, what you'll see at least in the guidance or the feedback of the DuPage County Health Department is if we are at a substantial level of community transmission, we should not have in-person learning opportunities. That's the experience where, the time where we should be operating with fully learning. If we're at a moderate level of community transmission, you would be able to support smaller cohort organized learning experiences where students aren't moving significantly throughout the building. So you see some to no mixing of groups of students and teachers throughout and across days and some students participating virtual and some in-person. And then at the minimal level, the, it opens up a bit in terms of the types of learning experiences. In the original hybrid model that we developed at the middle and high school, it would be more consistent with the way they described the minimal community transmission level. There are a couple of metrics specifically that they monitor as part of this. Chris, if you want to go forward one more, on their dashboard that gets updated weekly. And so if you look straight down through the metrics, what they look at is new cases per 100,000, right, published within the county, the weekly case count trend, the weekly youth case count trend, weekly test positivity, and then what is going on with neighboring or regional indicator levels. And what you see right now, at least within the document, is there are two of those metrics that at least at the county level, we sit at the moderate level. New cases per 100,000, that's fluctuated a bit. It's been as high as 90, I think 95, 96. Most recently came back down to 75. And then our positivity rate just ticked up over 5% in the last piece. The other criteria, we do sit at the minimal level. So again, as I mentioned at the onset, the DuPage County Health Department does not have any authority to enforce this return to school protocol with school districts. But I wanted to make sure that the board is aware of the guidance document that they have out there and where we sit. Again, this dashboard is updated every Friday, generally by 2:00 on Friday afternoon, the dashboard is updated. And as you look at the text within the Return to School Framework, the Health Department would like to see us on a two-week trend of moving down toward the next level to comfortably feel like we've moved into that minimal level. So our goal needs to be at a community transmission level to get those data points down into, into the minimal level that would fully support, at least in the definition of the Health Department, that would fully support a hybrid model.
So this DuPage County Health Department metrics are essentially sitting on one side of the table that says, things are okay in the county for us to move from one level to the next, you know, for us to open the gate that we can bring kids back and, based on these metrics. And so we don't control any of that. We don't control any of the numbers that happen within the community. This is, these are county-level metrics, all happen outside of the school. So, you know, what would be, if we as a board decided, eh, we're close enough, let's start the plan? What would be our exposure liability, you know, pos, you know, where would be exposed there? I mean, I know we would have that issue, but also, you know, we'd have to work with the teachers and the union to see, okay, so we're not really right there, we're close enough, you know, how's that going to work with the teachers? So those are the things that are kind of top of my mind right now. And when it looks at this door that we need to get open.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think in the question, Brad, you can, you absolutely can do that, right? As a board based on trend and it's going to work both ways, right? So assuming at some point in time, perhaps we cross the threshold into the red level. If you've just crossed into it, you can still make a determination that we're comfortable continuing our model as our, as our model exists. And conversely, you've got, you've got the ability to make whatever decisions that you want to in that.
The one thing, I want, just remember, one of our concepts has been not just to open, but to stay open, right? So it's more than just a threshold at one point in time. It's how do we keep the school open and productive? And I think we need to look at it in that context as well. And I'm not saying we don't do it. I'm just saying we need to look at it holistically. And I know that's your point, Brad. I'm not trying to correct it.
And another point that I wanted to make, so these metrics, I guess in a sense, tell us if it's safe to open schools, right? That's what the, we have to look to the health experts to tell us what's going on within the community. And we talked about this on August 12th. So on August 10th, Dr. Schuler and I wrote a letter to the DuPage County Health Department asking a very simple question. We wanted to know, do the community transmission metrics indicate if it's safe to resume in-person instruction? That was a simple question we asked in that letter. We never got an answer. Rob talked about this at that meeting. We didn't get this till August 28th, which was 11 days after we were supposed to start school. So this is kind of what we've been dealing with as a school district and a board is, like, we're trying to make a judgment factor based, or judgment decision based on what we don't have any control over, whether the health experts say it fits safe. And so that's, I just wanted the community to understand that that's what, this is what we've had to deal with a little bit that's kind of bogging down some of the conversations we're having with the county level. And I know you're talking with the Health Department on a weekly basis, right?
In addition, the superintendents in DuPage County are still having conversations as well, correct? And is there any collective efforts based on, you know, I'm just thinking, we work with other, you know, 203 with other, you know, 203 and 204, some of our benchmark districts, when we want to advocate for other things at the state level, are we working together on this? Because I think collectively, a larger voice gets heard. And, you know, I'm just thinking, rather than, I feel like this whole process was put on school districts to reinvent the wheel and try to figure out how to open. And if we could have worked collectively, as maybe a county, and tried to do that, we may be further down the road, you know? So I guess prior to our meeting on the 23rd, there are a few middle schools, I believe, open in DuPage County. If I'm not mistaken, I think Hinsdale might be, you know, that's bordering Cook and DuPage, but a few that are open. Even if they're not in DuPage, at Geneva, I would like to have us reach out to them, find out what is being done successfully to be able to still fall within these guidelines that they've been able to do, especially at the secondary level, just to be able to have some of those conversations. Because I think, again, we keep reinventing the wheel. Everybody is reinventing the wheel. And I just think if we work together as a larger group, we might be able to push forward.
I have another question. So we've been hearing a lot about Geneva being the one school district that we know of that has second, well, at least that I'm aware of, that has secondary students in person. And there, Kane County, does Kane County have a similar dashboard like this so that we could see what the conditions that they are operating under are? And I guess question number two is specifically, is that a school district that you have regular communication with and are we learning from them?
We're going to learn from them, without a doubt, right? They're open now and I think we're going to learn from their experience, whether we collaborate with them regularly or not. Obviously, there are a lot of school districts that are going to learn from their experience. I can't speak specifically to the Kane County Health Department, just because that's not the county Health Department that we work with, we work with DuPage County. So I don't know exactly what Kane County has issued in terms of a dashboard, right, around these pieces. And again, I just want to come back to, I think, you know, Chris, one of the things that you mentioned, right? So there was advocacy around the idea of just understanding health metrics, right? You heard a lot of comment even tonight on what metrics should we be looking at, what's important, what's relevant? And there are a lot of different thoughts or opinions around that. And so we asked specifically from the Health Department to understand this, right? This is what has been provided. Again, it is now up to the board and up to us to determine how we want to use this information as we're going about building the reopen plans and the reopen discussions, right? It's a piece of information, right, that's available to you and it will be up to us to determine at the local level how it is that we want to do this. But this is what we asked for. We did ask for some understanding of how, from the Health Department perspective, do they look at the transmission metrics?
DuPage County Health Department.
DuPage County Health Department.
So is this dashboard strictly a DuPage County construct?
This construct is a DuPage County construct.
So again, every county's figuring it out on their own as opposed to?
It is, the specific metrics though, that you do see referenced on the dashboard, did come from the Illinois Department of Public Health. So they indicated in their adaptive pause framework, Jenna, they identified, these are the pieces of information that should be looked at as a part of those reopening considerations. So they identified the metrics, they did not identify the kind of, how does each metric apply to the three different levels of minimal, moderate, and substantial community transmission? DuPage County provided that.
Just from an efficiency standpoint, it's frustrating to me that that all looks fairly clear, that every county wouldn't be doing something similar so you can compare apples to apples, especially when at a state level, if we're Region 8 and we're thrown in with Kane County and DuPage County, there ought to be something similar in the way that we're presenting data. Otherwise, how do you know what Region 8 is really doing if you don't have the same picture for each one? So that's hard.
I think that the, you know, we're talking about statistics here, you know, and I think the, in the big picture of life, what we're trying to do is nationwide, worldwide, is to prevent a COVID continuation, okay? And we've seen different states approach it differently. New York was very successful on how they shut down the COVID virus and, you know, it's been much better than, say, California or Iowa or some of the other states around. So my objective on all this is to really look at solving the problem. I want us to get back in school, stay in school, and be in what I would call full-time in-person learning. Because I think we're at a point now that we're doing this remote learning, but I think the next step, and I'm always confused when I hear, I went last night to the Memorial Park and I heard it tonight as well, and I think what I'm hearing is that if we go to the next step, we're in-person totally, we're just like the old days. And I don't think that's even a possibility in the near term. We're not going to have Friday night football games with, you know, 1,000 kids in the stand. We're not going to be able to do that because we're going to spread the virus if we do. If we send kids to school every day, under the model that we're going to be looking at first is a hybrid model. The hybrid model means that two days a week, the students are going to be remote learning anyway, okay? Unless, you know, again, you know, I don't know that we have what I would call a clear definition of in-person. And without that clear definition, I think the goals or the objectives, what I'm hearing, are not clear. And, you know, if we're talking about total in-person, total go back to the good old days, that's one thing. But I think that may be the expectation of some individuals. And I don't know how we'll achieve that in the short run, okay? I think, and stay open with it. So I really believe that we have to describe that next step and, you know, and go back. When we talk in-person, I'm thinking it's the one we had back in August. And that was a hybrid model. And that hybrid model said two days on, two days off. We're going to have the same technology problems on that second day when the kids aren't in class. In fact, it's going to be worse because they're not as in contact. You know, they don't have immediate access, that's a standalone day. So if our objective is to get back full-time in class, no hybrid or anything, we have to be conscious of these models so that we can get there. And that's really where I'm looking at this thing. And I think if we try to deal with some of these minor interpretations, we're not going to achieve the ultimate goal in that solving. Maybe we'll get a vaccine before the election or something, I don't know. That would be wonderful. And then we go back to the full-time thing. And in reality, I think we're approaching that. And that may approach or be concluded by December. Well, I would like to make sure we don't get there. I read an article today in the Daily Herald, it was a great article, page one, and then they had an editorial. And the quote, the name of the editorial was "Honor, Nana, and Papa." Okay? When I hear about people who can't visit their families because they're concerned about viruses, that's a problem to me. Because that's the family unit, we want to make sure, that's who we are as Americans. So, you know, I don't want to get this isolated, let me sign off. I don't want my friend's business to go out because we're spreading the virus. I want to solve it and hope we can solve it in a month. Or a virus, or, you know, by distancing. And that's an important role. So I think, let's not get too hung up on the statistics.
So we have a couple more slides I want to go through that I think, Jim, are going to take us into the elements of our plan that are being reworked as we look at both that date. And then we are going to discuss or set with the board an assessment date for looking at that. So let me let Melissa walk you through the last couple of slides here.
Okay, so I have the opportunity to speak to you about a return of our secondary students to in-person learning. And the question on the table really is, what needs to be reworked from our original plan and why do we need to do that? So on August 12th, the IDPH issued that FAQ. At that point in time, there were a few pieces of information in that FAQ that led us to make the difficult decision to start in a remote setting at our secondary level. We had a plan for full implementation at grades 6 through 12 with our hybrid model that we spent months preparing. The two pieces that came out in that FAQ that were not a part of our plan are here on the slide. We've already discussed the first one. It has to do with the changing classrooms and the new cleaning protocols. That could limit the number of rooms available if there was a confirmed or probable case. Second, that definition of a close contact changed on August 12th. We had been planning around the idea that it was 15 minutes in one interaction. It changed to 15 minutes over the course of the day. When you look at our hybrid model and what we put together, passing periods were four to five minutes in length. And so we suddenly had some new challenges. Dr. Schuler just spoke to you about the new information that came out on August 28th from DuPage County and those metrics. We sit in that orange area right now, that's called moderate community transmission. And in that area, there's a new challenge sitting with our secondary schools where it talks about limited mixing of students. I want to reiterate, our teams aren't stopping the work because there are challenges. Our teams are at the table still, working on these, working through these items because we want our children in the classrooms. So what exactly needs to be reworked? These are the three items I've outlined, the two from the IDPH around the cleaning protocols, the close contact, and now the Return to School Framework, specifically that orange area. Here are some pieces that we are currently discussing. One, we're now considering a phase-in approach for grade levels. This reduces the capacity at our buildings and it allows us to monitor and ensure new plans work. If we go about a phased-in approach, we need to rework the current remote bell schedule. That's something that we were always open to doing. We put that bell schedule together as a starting point. We have always been open to evaluating the success of that through feedback from our students and our staff, but we would be required to make that change if we had a phased-in approach because we would have staff living in both teaching worlds for a time period. We also would need to minimize the length of our transitions, specifically passing periods, and continue to ensure the six-feet physical distancing to the greatest extent Those items address the new guidance, but there are additional planning elements that need to be considered now. On August 14th, when we made that decision to allow the Virtual Academy's high school students to follow their class schedule instead of using edgenuity, we now are working with our teams to revise our plans for the Virtual Academy at the high school. We are currently working on that. And with whatever model we choose, we are continuing to ensure our teachers are fully prepared to implement that instructional model. So we have another meeting very soon, September 23rd. It's a committee of the whole meeting. We already have items that we will be preparing and presenting to all of you. We will continue to present and assess our plan at the elementary level and the success. As Dr. Schuler stated, that will be a guiding factor for us in terms of what happens at the secondary level. Next, we will be continuing to review the current community transmission metrics. And lastly, we will be bringing new plans to the board regarding our secondary schools. So at this point in time?
And Melissa, is the original hybrid model the starting point for that?
Correct.
And when you say phase in, might it be a particular grade level at that hybrid?
That is correct. Schedule?
How quickly can we implement? So you present on the 23rd. If metrics are stable on the downward side, how fast can we open?
That's a very good question. It definitely doesn't mean we can open on the 24th.
Right.
So, but it all depends on the work that we are currently doing. At the middle school, that implementation would be quicker due to that Virtual Academy piece being in place at this current time.
Do we still have edgenuity though as a possibility for our high school to be able to?
We definitely do.
We do. And we're also exploring with edgenuity some live streaming options that would perhaps offer a different path for Virtual Academy.
I have a question, back to the DuPage County dashboard that we were looking at. I understand the thought process behind it. I'm wondering how, whether we also mesh that with, what is the experience right here in District 200 with our own schools and the metrics we're seeing? So if we're still moderate somewhere in DuPage County, but we've been successful with the students that we do have in school keeping things under wraps, does that give us the confidence to move forward into more in-person instruction even if we're sitting in a moderate transmission level?
Yeah, and I think it has to, right? I think you have the, I guess I would say you have the benefit of that experience, you know? Agree or not with where we're at on the secondary level, actually very few school districts in DuPage County that even have elementary students in right now. So we have the benefit of 15 schools with students in person to learn from that experience and see what's working and what's not working and how plans get modified. So I think you have to take that into consideration with the dashboard piece. The other thing I'll mention is that that dashboard is tracking data on a county level. There's actually a tool, I think, inside of that dashboard that allows you to do a search by zip code town. We have very discrepant pieces of information even as you look across zip codes or towns within the school districts. So data is not the same across each of our municipalities. And so I mention that to say, I think, how we look at the success of the in-person experiences, I think also reflects the reality of what's at play right now in the community.
So when we hear a report from you guys the next time, is it possible to request a little bit deeper detail on this so that someone can, the relevant zip codes are? I should, I know, be able to figure that out for myself, but I'm not particularly tech savvy.
There are a couple of those data points that I can give you by zip code, definitely. There are a few of the data points off of the dashboard that I don't think have a drill down by zip code, but a couple of the key ones there are.
Susan, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to really hit home, I know you touched on it, but I just, because almost every email that has been coming through says that these are just guidelines, we don't have to follow them. We can, we don't have to, or we can kind of pick and choose, we can, you know, that we can kind of make, we can use it as guidance, but we don't have to follow it to a T. And so I just want to talk about that a little bit. So, and just get some clarification on that. So this is joint guidance by IDPH and ISBE, Illinois School Board. And if we say, okay, so right now it's, let's just say, you can, you can, you can't, you have to leave school if you have one symptom. And we say, you can stay if you have one or two, but you have to go home if you have three. Or let's say it's six foot different distance and we're going to say, we're going to use five. five, you know, or whichever, whatever you want to choose. What, can we do that? And if we do do that, what is the consequence of that? Either from IDPH, from ISBE, from DuPage County Health Department? Is there, do we have flexibility in following those guidelines?
Um-
And I know that you said we asked that question directly to our council and they said, yes, you do. You have to follow these as they are written and there's not flexibility there. So, but I just want to understand that if we just chose, if we chose not to, because like you said, it's at the local level, and what, what could, what could result from that?
Yeah, so, let me try to break down the question and answer what is actually not a super simple question in as simple a way as I can, right? I think A, depends on what aspects of guidance that you're talking about, right? There are some core pieces of guidance in the plan around adhering to physical distance, wearing of a face covering, some of the core elements that we don't have an option of not following. How we go about executing close contact, monitoring symptom screening, so symptom screening is a requirement, but our adherence to the exclusion of kids with a symptom, right? We, we don't have discretion to do that, but we have to execute that process at the local level, right? If we don't execute that process and there is an incident and as a result of that incident, right, we end up with a very sick individual, right? The responsibility that sits on the district if we knowingly said, we're just not following that, I think is very different than obviously if we are attempting to adhere to all guidance with good faith. So the question that I asked your attorney, and I think the response that you gave is that it would be irresponsible for us to simply say, we're ignoring it. We are going to carry out adherence to that, to that guidance to the best of our ability to do. We're not going to just say, it's not there, we're not going to do it. If we were to do that, at least in the response and the guidance from your attorney, I think you do leave yourself to exposure if the situation happens.
And would our insurance companies cover a lawsuit brought by COVID?
Not likely.
What is exposure? That means personal exposure of the board members?
So that money, so if we were to be sued and they won?
You would get sued.
What?
You. You. You personally-
Yeah, no, I understand.
Jeff, we're not personally liable.
If you violate a regulation from what our attorney said, you are.
So, oh, come on. So can you clarify the letter that we see from our attorney that ties the ISBE guidance and the IDPH guidance to the executive orders? That's what's misunderstood here. I know the conversation was had in our community with the deputy governor who was explaining that it was guidance, but it didn't get into this issue that was clarified in our legal counsel's letter to us and how that's, how the executive orders get tied to the guidance. Can you explain that a little bit for everybody?
The original guidance around reopening of schools was issued jointly with IDPH and ISBE. That guidance compels the school district to follow them based on the implementation of those pieces. Again, there are two layers to this, all right? There are some core elements that were in the reopening, the original reopening plans, right? The core requirements around if you're going to reopen schools, you must do these things, right? And then August 12th, there was some supplemental guidance around, here's how you are asked to handle specific situations, response to symptoms, to the close contact monitoring, to cleaning, to those pieces. Again, the core elements in the joint issued guidance, we follow. We have to follow those because they were issued jointly with ISBE and IDPH, not a choice in that, right? Again, to, I think your question of, right, at any point in time, right, with students in our buildings, right? Things can happen and as a result of things that happen in our buildings, individuals can choose to seek remedy through the court to hold us responsible, right, for what happens. If we are, if we are, we are making every effort to comply with guidance that's been laid out for us, right? We have certainly a much stronger stance even when situations happen and they will. Again, come back to the original data slide that was up there. We have very good plans in place at our elementary buildings right now. We have two positive cases, right, of COVID. So things are going to happen, right, whether they be in the virus, in the COVID space, or just in the, in the operation of schools. I don't think simply saying that guidance is too rigid, we're not going to follow it, is an option. We need to make a good faith effort to build plans that allow us to comply with it. That's what we've done at the elementary level. We have figured that, call it a puzzle, we figured that puzzle out, right? We've put the pieces in place to be able to operate our elementary in-person programs. And if we see that they work and that we can do it, I believe that there's a path forward to move us to in-person at the secondary level.
Can, so can, and I fully understand that. We're not, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but I think we have a lot of community members who are asking us to do that. And so I just want to be very crystal clear about what the ramifications are of us as a district saying, thank you for the guidance. We're going to follow most of it, but we're going, we think these couple areas, choose whatever you want, are too restrictive and we're going to kind of pare back on some of those. What would, what could ISBE do to our district? Since these are joint guidelines from IDPH and ISBE, if we were to not follow, like openly consciously not follow something, would there be consequences from ISBE?
Again, I think, Susan, it depends on what aspect of this guidance that you're talking about, right? If we were to say we're going to reopen schools and not require face covering, right, totally different scenario than some of the more nuanced aspects of the guidance in terms of the symptom monitoring and those pieces. So I knew what you're trying to, I think you're trying to ask in terms of what can be the consequence be, but the bottom line is that's going to depend on what it is that we are not adhering to, right? In a general year, if we choose not to follow guidance issued from the Illinois State Board of Education around any number of things that were required, right, they can withhold funding, they can withhold recognition of schools, there are things that they can, they can do. But again, right, you know, if you look at the list of, of things that school districts in Illinois are required to do by the Illinois State Board of Education, it's a mile long, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Aside, questions, comments?
First, I have one specific question on the, what would have to be retooled, the remote bell schedule. Does that mean the bell schedule would become the same between in-person and remote?
Yeah, I think, so I think that, oh, the implication of that, as Melissa's talking about that, is if we begin to phase grade levels in, let's say you map out a plan, Dave, where you introduce grade six students first, then grade seven, then grade eight students, whatever your remote bell schedule is, has to mirror your in-person bell schedule because you're going to have teachers teaching students that are in front of them and students that are, that are remote. So you can't have two different bell schedules that are aligned on that.
And then the other question I have is around, you know, right now, I know the high school schedule, because I have a high school, or I think the middle school's similar, but these two asynchronous pieces at the beginning and the end of the day, and a lot of comments about, are coming in about the short, you know, 30-minute classes. And are, do you guys feel that the two asynchronous pieces are necessary or could one of those be removed and the classes extended a little bit?
Yes, I'm sorry, ask a question, Dave.
So like, you know, they have, I don't remember the exact time, but there's an hour, hour and a half in the morning-
You're talking about currently in the day?
Yeah, today.
Yeah, I got you.
Secondary schedule.
Yes.
At least for high school. And then they have 30-minute sessions.
Correct.
And then asynchronous at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Are both of those asynchronous schedules, pieces of the schedule needed? Or is it possible to remove one of those and make the 30 minutes 40 minutes?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that could absolutely be looked at with however the schedule gets retooled.
That's kind of what I understood what Mrs. Murphy said in terms of, it was kind of the starting point. And then I just want to make a general comment about it, about this whole, whole thing. I mean, the, most of the discussion tonight and the community support is around getting back to school. I think everybody's sitting around the table, well, I'll echo what Rob said a couple meetings ago, I can only speak for myself. That's what I want and I think that's what most of us want. I don't like the decision that was made to go remote, but I agree with it. And so, and it's also obvious from all these plans, you know, that there's a lot that has to happen once we make that decision. So I think just acknowledging, you know, that work and then once that decision was made, the incredible amount of work to get to where we are today. And I'm sure there's people frustrated that it's going to be two more weeks before we really hear the plan, but we've only been in school for one week. So to think we'll be in school for three weeks and then talk about some alternatives, I don't like it, but I think it's reasonable and it's the only way we're going to do it effectively. So I just wanted to make that comment.
I would agree with Dave. If we made a solid decision to go remote, and I also understand why we made that decision and agree with it, then you've got to have a few weeks of hard data to measure if we're successful in what we're doing. Otherwise, that was a very arbitrary decision to make and I don't think anybody in this group makes arbitrary decisions because there's been a lot of work going into every decision that's been made. And I don't know that that's totally understood or acknowledged by the entire community and it's hard when you and your family are the ones being affected by it, but everybody needs to realize that these decisions are not made in a vacuum and there's been a lot of hard work going in into them. And everybody here is a parent, has been a parent, will be a parent of school-aged children. And so we all are using the same mindset about this and we all want our kids all to go to school. So just going to throw that in as a general statement because we've gotten certainly plenty of response from the community that occasionally wants to throw in the thought that we don't care or we're being arbitrary or, or that we're not really thinking this through and that is not the case. So I can appreciate that we do need a few weeks of decent data. I also, it seems very clear that this year is not going to be business as usual, no matter how hard any of us would like that to be. So it's going to be a moving kind of thing and, you know, I don't know how you're talking about phasing students in and I will wait for that report because I trust that you're working hard on it, however that's going to look. But I was hoping to know that somehow built into this, no matter how it's going to unfold, we've got some sort of feedback structure in there so that we're asking people on a regular basis, like Mr. Longs was asking his kids to report to him pros, cons, what's working, what's not, so that we are actively asking. I'd like to make sure we're asking all of the kids how things are going, pro and con, because I don't want to just wait for those who are willing to speak up and say they're having problems to be the ones that get the attention. I want to make sure we're reaching out to all of our kids.
Okay. I want to try to move through this a little quicker here. We've still got a lot on our agenda tonight. Rob, comments?
I don't see anything in the presentations and the online information that changes our fundamental operational problem is that we can't, at the high school level, I'll just talk about high school, we can't effectively trace and quarantine students because of passing periods. We might be able to get some students back as the plan lays out really well, but I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see anything in the guidelines from the health department or anyone else that says we can get back to where we were. Am I wrong?
Meaning everybody in person?
I mean hybrid, even hybrid. I, to me, everyone in person is off the table. If we're going to follow the guidelines, in-person's off the table, in my opinion, if we're going to follow the guidelines.
For everybody.
Huh?
Sorry, go ahead.
That, so that my second point though, your second question, is in a hybrid model, I'm not sure how you get both high schools back in the hybrid model and still be able to effectively track and trace to the guideline requirements. Am I wrong in that? I didn't ask you.
Yeah. So, one, it will depend on the number of situations in which you're doing contact tracing and what that looks like. So, Rob, can you do it? It will be dependent on what the conditions and the situations are that present itself. So, like, I, part of what I think you see in the transition plan is a thought of gradually introducing and transitioning students up to that hybrid piece, right? If you reduce, hybrid is built on a, on a thought of a 50% operational capacity within the building, a little less than 50%, because you have some students that are not attending any days in person, so it's a little lower than 50%. So if you start even lower and phase your way up, I think you'll see the answer to that question.
Right. So I like the idea of phasing up. That makes total sense to me, right? And we'll monitor the situation. But there is a tipping point that's less than full hybrid where we can't exercise tracing and quarantine. That's what I thought. That's one of the new, when the new guidance came out on whatever date that was, that was the point. And I don't see anything that's changed to change that outcome right now. I'm just trying to be realistic about what we can possibly do. So I love all the work we've done. I think we should definitely continue phasing in, but there is a tipping point where we're not going to be able to track and trace, at least at the high school level, probably the junior highs as well, if you have full participation with the hybrid model. Just my opinion. I'm trying to, I'm trying, I don't want, I don't want unrealistic expectation set that we're going back to anything standard anytime soon. I just don't think it's possible if we follow the guidelines as directed. And I hope I'm wrong. I want to be wrong. I want to be wrong, right? But the key thing is keeping the kids and staff and teachers safe, in my opinion.
First question?
Yeah, I guess I would just like us to be thinking out of the box. I'd like us to not only look at what's happening in our regional area, I'd like us to look at success. You know, there are, there are other states that I know that had very high COVID populations and they've been in school for a month. And so I would really like to see what can we learn from them as well and what are their successes that they are staying open? I just want us to keep an open mind. I also think that DuPage County houses, we have not one high school, public high school in DuPage County open right now. But these high schools in DuPage County are some of the most successful high schools in the state and the nation. And I think there's a lot of great leadership that can really kind of pull themselves together and really dig into what can we do? The whole idea of what can we do to open and stay open? And I just think that if minds can be put together, think together, work together, solve this problem together, and think out of the box, you know, we can do something. So I just, I really want us to keep that commitment that we're going to keep an open mind and try. Maybe it's block scheduling so that we only have three or four classes during a day. And it's something that at least gets the kids back in because I do hear, and I know all of us here, we read these emails and- Because I, I do hear, and I know all of us here, we read these emails and I think of kids. Every single time I read it, it's a face that's behind that, that email that is struggling right now. And I want to be sure we're doing everything we can. I know we are because this district, that's why we sit at this table, because we believe in this district. And I know everybody is working very hard to get there. I just, I want us to keep pushing forward. And I know we will, but I want us to keep pushing forward.
Is block scheduling something that's been considered in, in the planning?
Yes, so I mean, the block would just be restructuring your classes so that perhaps you, you don't offer every period, every day, but longer chunks, yeah.
Right, so less movement.
Yep, less movement. So again, that, that's a different way of looking at a phased in approach as well, right? That you could look at, at reducing the number of classes within a, a given day. And again, when I, when I talked at the junior high level or at the middle school level about starting with a grade level and phasing up, I offered that as an example. I'm not offering that as the plan.
Right, I understand that.
That is currently being proposed. I was offering that as, as an example. I think there's, there are a few different ways to, to look at how it is that you could reduce the movement by perhaps having kids in less classes in a day.
So let me just try to summarize this and kind of close this topic for tonight. So on one side, we have the DuPage County Health Department metrics, right? So the, all this, all the data, that's the community transmission numbers, all that statistics that are going to inform us whether we can open schools or to what extent are we as a board going to decide that we're going to move to, move to the plan. And then we have to go through the process of developing the plan to be ready for that point, which is what we're going to be working on the next couple of weeks for the presentation on September 23rd. And once we make that decision and we begin implementing the plan, the IDPH rules and guidance that were issued to us on August 12th is the world we need to live under, right? So this is how we have to operate, the rules we need to follow to enable us to continue in-person learning in whatever model it's going to be. So that's kind of the, the three step process, right? So we have the information from the health, DuPage Health Department that tells us when. The Illinois Department of Public Health tells us how and what we have to do to live within that world. The process of developing that plan that we'll get shared with the board is how we, how we get to that point. So that's, that's kind of what I'm hearing right now. I mean, just to echo, to kind of close this, we all from day one, everybody in this room wanted kids in school. We were the last high schools in DuPage County to decide to start remotely. And I'm, there's several elementary school districts in DuPage County that are not starting remotely. We're one of the only ones. And we've got 15 schools in person. So we can learn a lot from that. So a lot to be proud of. I want the community to know that we are absolutely committed as a district and as a school board to being in person. But we have things we have to work through. That, that this is just the world we have to live in, and we're committed to trying to do it. And it's not going to be easy, but we're committed to the kids and, and the teachers. We still have to remember that the teachers have to, and the staff have to work within, within this environment too. So that's kind of my, my closing thoughts that sets up the conversation we'll have on the 23rd. Any other quick summaries of that? All right, so we know what the task going forward is. Now, we're going to move on to our second discussion item, which was a continuation of a discussion, a discussion on equity and proactive practices work plan that was presented to the board a couple of different times in June and then once in July. We just wanted to close this presentation. I felt in July, I don't remember the exact date, we kind of weren't able to finish it after about a two and a half hour conversation on school reopening. So I just wanted to close that process. And, and I went back and looked at the, the, the meeting notes or the minutes from that. And at the end of that, Dr. Schuler asked us a couple, a couple of questions as a board that he wanted direction on. What, you know, do we, do we want feedback on the opening statement and what are we going to do with that? But that's at that orange bar at the top of the page. And then, secondly, do we want to revisit our belief statements and incorporate some reference to equity and proactive practices within that? So it's kind of a setup for the, the closing of this conversation we've had for a couple, three months. Is there anything you wanted to present? So we're looking at this work plan for the 2020, 21 school year.
No, I don't, nothing, nothing new from, from our level. I mean, we've obviously continued to move forward on the, the elements of the work plan that we've been able to put in place. There were a few that tie to some specific training opportunities that will be dependent on our ability to carry some of those out in, in person. But we continue to move forward on the equity practices.
Did board members have any questions or comments? I know that in the, some of the comments before Susan made mention about referencing gender identity in, in that statement. And there was also a reference to should we just make sure this is bold enough to be more explicit about calling out race and discrimination as an issue? But otherwise, I, I thought as a board, we were pretty good with the statement as kind of a, I think what Rob referred to as a beacon for our work plan.
And was this something that the, the Equity Task Force was going to be also discussing? Are they weighing in on that?
We haven't, we haven't specifically given that to the task force yet. So the task force has really started its work around the study of a text, which you have a copy of at your, your table. That's really what they're using as a starting point for their conversation within the, the task force. But it certainly is something that could come to, to that group to take a look at at some point.
So are we looking at equity as well? You know, so I look at this plan and I think of a traditional school year. And I'm trying to also figure out that we have some equity divide, I think, that's happening right now in a remote, in a remote setting. So is that, like, like, should that be built into this in some way that, as well? Or do we feel like that's already built into this? Or do we need a separate area somewhere within this that can make sure that we are addressing?
Chris, that's a fair question. I think this work plan was really built when we were operating under kind of a different premise of a year. So that, that's absolutely something we can, we can look at. We've got obviously some strategies in place to ensure that we cross that digital divide. Obviously, the, the board even in making some decisions to purchase additional technology, move one to one, purchase some additional hotspots and internet access. You've, you've taken some steps to, I think, close that, that digital divide. But that's absolutely something we can look at.
And one more question. I know we established a board committee. Is that board committee going to oversee each one of these areas? Are some of these areas falling into other board committees as well?
I think the, your committee oversees progress in the entire equity plan.
So maybe some of the conversation we're having here to close this conversation would be something that would go back to the committee that we've created. I think that was Dave and Jenna. So to kind of.
Yeah, we can do that.
Finalize this document, but then also kind of monitor and oversee on behalf of the board how it's being implemented.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't quite sure what Chris stated there. I didn't quite hear it well. But I just, my, my impression here is I've thought about this. I've watched a lot of news programs on it. And, you know, I think that we are in the position as educators, you know, dealing with, how do we bridge this gap that exists? And the only way we have contribution, that is education. And I, you know, when I heard earlier today about, you know, some of the struggles kids were having with either technology or whatever at home, you know, because their parents couldn't help them or whether it be economic or social, whatever the case may be, that we need to, you know, that's the group that I want to say, can we reach through this? And, and I think that I'm looking forward to seeing that we need to give consideration to that in-class learning, whether it's a high school student, middle school, to bring kids that are struggling in, in more direct contact with people. And I, you know, I'd like to see that because that's where I think, you know, that's the fundamental core of what we're trying to get to here. So whatever we can do on that front. I, we kind of touched on it tonight, and I'd look forward to maybe a little more conversation on that under the reopening concept at our next meeting.
And then kind of the other quick reference I made to the belief statements. We have these 11 belief statements. I think we probably need to schedule an IAS, IASB Board Governance Workshop, which would be, I think, a good opportunity to review.
That's a good idea.
Review those and consider how we could tie some of these statements into that document. I think I've been, Jim and I in the past, several years ago, looked at our vision and our mission statement and, and these belief statements. So I think that would be a good opportunity to review these in that, in that workshop.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? I'm, you know, I, I know we kind of moved this down the road here. I just wanted to make sure we closed the loop and had a plan for the administration and all the feedback we needed.
Is there somewhere on our website or can there be somewhere on our website that's easy to find that just highlights the fact that this work is happening? So that as we start the school year, and it might have been Jim who mentioned that we, that we want to make sure that this is part of the reopening of school and that students who know, who raise their voices, you know, when some of the pivotal events happened this summer that really got the, the social conversation going, you know, they started coming out of the woodwork and talking about how they have concerns. Is there a way to make sure that they understand that it wasn't a blip and we listened for a week? But that there has been work going on and is going to continue to be going work on. So it's not, it's, I guess I have two questions. Are we communicating with the students? And are we communicating just with our entire community that we have equity work going on? And that's, that it's ongoing work of the board?
Oh, I think that's, that's our objective. Right, I don't, I don't know that we're, I don't know to what level we're doing it yet, but certainly that's something we know this plan indicates we're going to do.
So by figuring out what this statement really needs to look like, is that our starting point? That we then get it on our website at some point so that?
To me, honestly, and, and I don't want to, I don't want to diminish the statement, but the, this, the statement is really kind of a, of an umbrella way to tie together all of the work that's happening in the plan. To me, the important stuff is what's in the blue, not what's in the red.
Well, I understand that. And I just want our community to know that it's happening.
Yeah, no, I hear you. Yeah, yeah, I, I hear you on that. So I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't know that I've got a, a super clear answer for you today, but we will absolutely make sure that we do it. I mean, I think the last piece, when you go all the way to the, to the backside of the plan under family and community engagement, those are the two strategies that sit under there, Jenna. So if I, if I told you we had that accomplished, then we would need to have that on the, the plan. We know this needs to have a broader community engagement around, right? The, the peace and a communication piece, so.
Or even, I, I mean, I don't know what kinds of communications our principals at the high school level have with their students. But is there a way to make sure that at that level, that the principals are, are communicating with the students? That, you know, we're aware of the concern over social justice and, and there's something happening, whatever it is.
Yep.
And I, and I'm sure it'll be different in how they deal with it at each high school. But I just want to make sure that that's a, a common theme and the kids are aware of it.
Yeah, we, we absolutely will move that idea forward.
Okay, so maybe this is one of the first board committees set up and move forward on that. And I'll contact, or contact at IASB to try to look at scheduling a fall workshop for us.
Will we get periodic updates on where these are at to the board? Is that, or will it just be under a bill, board reports because there's a committee now?
Well, this would be like, sorry, go ahead.
The committee meets, then obviously the board's going to get the full update from that committee. You'll get the notes from the, the committee. In terms of bringing updates to the full board, we can, we can do that as often as the board requests the update, right? So I think on the agenda tonight and that we're going to get to hopefully in a little bit is the, the, the report on special populations, which was something you expressed interest in. I'll remind the board at any time. This is your agenda. So at any meeting, if you're requesting an update or a discussion on a certain topic, you, you have access to the agenda. You simply need to make the request to Brad that he, he put that on. So, so I, I think at any point in the year, if you want an update on, on one of the key board plans, just, just ask for it and we'll, we'll give an update on the agenda. But most certainly, anything that the committee is doing will come to the full board.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that the, you know, we've, these are good topics to, I don't want to use the word town hall. Let's go back to community engagement programs. You know, that if we can have, you know, these are two of the best topics in my mind. Reopening and this, this equity issue are the, you know, perfect for, you know, those kind of meetings. And, you know, in the past, I've always struggled on what do we want to convey? And we've done it around finances and referendums. But these are kind of core, core situations that, you know, that I think are important that we can convey. So that, you know, I don't know how you can accomplish those effectively now, whether it's Zoom or whatever, but, you know, or whatever which way. But, you know, those, these are really good topics to communicate with the community on. It's just.
I, just one piece of guidance. I want this to focus on our students. I don't want it to focus on solving the problems of our community, whatever they might be. I don't want it to focus on anything other than our students. I think we all agree, but I just want to be very clear on that.
Yep.
Good point.
It's pretty deep, though. It's just students are.
Agreed, but I want it to be about our students and that, because we, we won't be able to get anything done.
No, I agree, I agree.
Because it's such a passionate topic, right? It'll just.
I consent.
All right, I'm going to move to our third discussion item, which is the 2020-21 Citizens Advisory Committee. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so I shared a little background with the, the board on this. CAC is a board authorized committee, so has to operate underneath the parameters of the Open Meetings Act as, as the committee operates. We've typically met in person. We have not yet met for this year. I gave the board the results of, of a survey that we did of the returning and joining members of the committee to ask their comfort with meeting in person. So again, I just, just want to kind of like visually give you a sense of this, which is a little bit of my concern. Even though we could physically meet in person, it would have to be in a setting that looks somewhat like the audience chairs out there. That's about 34 chairs spaced six feet apart, which I have concern would not be overly conducive for like a community discussion type forum. We obviously have members of the committee that have expressed a willingness to kind of re-meet in, in person. So I'm not saying it would have to be in rows like this, but I'm just trying to kind of visually give you a sense of 30 plus chairs spaced out by six feet. Like it, it's not going to be super easy to, you know, to conduct that size grooming. So really, our, our three options are we either meet in person and try to solve that logistics, see what it looks like. Two, we meet via Zoom, but we would then have to make sure that that link is available and published so that any member of the public that wanted to listen in, since it's a public meeting, has the ability to, to do so. Or three, we delay the start until we see if we arrive at a time when restrictions are lifted a little bit. Clearly, what I'm, what I'm pleased with is the committee wants to work, right? They've expressed a willingness to come together and do the work. Probably a slightly larger percentage that said they'd be more comfortable with the, the online opportunity than the in-person opportunity, but.
So let's just go around the table here and get some feedback from individual board members.
What are the topics, what are the topics they're going to address or planning to address?
Whatever, whatever topics that either you as a board indicate you'd like feedback from them on.
We haven't decided yet.
We have not specifically laid out a, an agenda. We got, we got about two thirds of the way through a series of discussions on equity last year with that group before the group stopped meeting back in, in March. So the, the topic we were just having is a topic that we had introduced with that group, looking at kind of all the different aspects of, of equity. I would imagine that the continued conversations on reopening of schools would probably be prime for feedback from that, that group as well. Those would, would seem to be the two things that probably rise to the surface. Those would, would seem to be the two things that probably rise to the surface right away.
Did you have any thoughts?
No. I don't.
Okay. Dave?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. It's a tough one. I could, I don't, I really don't.
Well, so let me just ask, let me just ask a different question to the board. Do we want to suspend this for a year until we're able to get everybody back?
No, I feel pretty strongly that we need to keep doing this. As a, someone who was a member for, I was there four or five years, this is a really important group. I actually personally miss it. I got a lot out of that group. It, it brings a lot of different community members together and to give an opinion on whatever we're talking about. I think this is a hugely important group that needs to stay intact and needs to get going. And I think that, I think knowing how that group works and what, what we do and amount of group work, this is not going to work with that group. I, I think that it has to be online, it has to be through Zoom. We did it on the reopening team where you break, you can break out into the rooms. I know that puts probably a little bit more on you, you know, or somebody else, but I think, I just, I feel very strongly that we need to keep this committee intact and we need to get it moving. And I think that it should be via Zoom until we can be a little bit closer together when we work, when they do break out into small groups and discuss things, so.
If we're asking our kids to do Zoom, we think we can probably get the CAC to use it.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, I think it worked when we did it for our core team and broke out into rooms. I thought it worked fine. I thought it worked really good. And I just think this committee is just way too important to put off for a year. There's, we've got too, too much going on, too big of issues going on that to not have that community input, I think would be a real detriment to us.
Jim?
I think Susan said a perfect statement there, and I agree with it.
I think it makes sense, given that, you know, you have people who want to throw their input in to us who, in an inappropriate time to do that. So they have some sort of format within the community where community members can sit and talk about things amongst themselves and have representation from the district is probably a good thing. Yeah, I'm 100% in thinking we need to do it. I, I look at it as it's 35 individuals. If they talk to 10 people, we have an immediate 350 people response. I think with this year of being so many challenges of new things, we need to keep that communication piece open. So I, I'm, I'm all for keeping it this year.
Yeah, I agree with what Susan said. My hesitation or my struggle is the, the effectiveness of in-person or not.
Yeah, well...
Especially for the, I know it will work great for the breakouts, but when you've got 35 people on there, it just, you know, for the, for the overall group, sometimes that loses some effectiveness, especially the interaction part. So that's the hesitation I have is do you wait and see if we can do it in person in a couple of months or just start? But I agree, and it probably makes more sense to start because of the continuity. Because if you take a year off, you're going to lose some people.
So you're suggesting we start remote and then move to in-person?
Yeah, we can.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, hesitation, I don't, I don't, I guess, yes.
75% of the, the people said they would prefer and be comfortable with the parameters around remote and two-thirds, 66%, would be in-person. So it sounds like we want to move forward with it. We want to start remote, recognizing that, you know, we'd love to be able to get back in person, but it's up on the board, maybe in our next meeting, to have a discussion about what the topics should be. So that's something for the board members to think about, probably for the October meeting.
Okay.
And then do we have to approve the schedule of meetings at that board meeting as well?
A recommended schedule of meetings. I'll try to bring that for actually the September community, the whole.
Okay. Okay, moving, so that's the end of discussion items. Now we'll move to the oral report on the reopening update and focus on special populations.
Okay, continuing our conversation on reopening plans, but this has a specific focus on our special populations. And I've invited two members of my department to join me in this presentation this evening. This is Erica Ekstrom, who's our Executive Director for Special Education, will be presenting tonight, along with our new Director for ELP and Equity, Dr. Lee Maurice Pueyo. She, Dr. Lee Maurice Pueyo joined us in July and jumped right into the work that we are presenting this evening. So we have five guiding questions that are, are how we have organized the presentation this evening. So we are going to walk the board through what we have prepared relative to each of these guiding questions. And we're going to start right here with the question of the instructional guidance that we have received from the State Board of Education regarding our students with disabilities and our English learners. We've talked about this before, but we have received multiple documents over this summer that have informed our programming. Each of these documents speaks to the robust and enhanced delivery model that was in place in the spring. So you're going to see a list of five different pieces of guidance that we received on multiple dates that were very specific to the populations we're discussing tonight. It's also important to note that we are still required to continue to meet all timelines that are related to the Individuals with Disabilities Act, American with Disabilities Act, and Title III. Moving into our next question here, how did we prepare for the 2020, 2021 school year with our special populations? And here, I'll turn it over.
So much like many people have talked about, a huge and deep and heartfelt thank you goes out to our various staff members across the district, whether it was our teachers or related service staff members or various health service staff members who began working as early as May to begin to develop guidance and resources for reopening, not only for in-person, but for remote learning. Our staff members also worked tirelessly throughout the summer to host various summer training opportunities, host Zoom meetings, as well as develop a robust asynchronous library of training resources to help support the reopening efforts and in-person instruction. We also collaborated both with our local school districts as well as national colleagues to help brainstorm and guide reopening efforts and to ensure that we were enhancing services for all of our programming models and to make sure that our services were both robust for in-person and remote learning.
Thank you. So we also did a lot of planning with respect to our English learners and various teachers and administrators participated in committees to consider the ELP experience with planning for in-person and remote learning. We also had ELP specialists work to develop lesson exemplars, looking at resources that were specifically designed to meet the needs of students in grades K through eight and in language proficiency levels from one to three. Co-teaching teams and grade level teams also met over the summer and they worked on collaborative Google classrooms, differentiated instruction, and student-to-student collaboration along with family engagement.
We rec, we rec, we recognize that a one-size-fits-all model is not going to meet the needs for all of our students with disabilities. So these next couple of slides are going to talk about the various different plans that will meet the various needs of our students with disabilities. So the first thing to keep in mind is the big, large overview for our students with disabilities. During this, these first couple of days of school, our case managers and special education teams are spending times connecting with students, connecting with each other, and reviewing the student's individual education plan in order to have more information regarding the supports and services that are going to be needed to help support students both within in-person instruction as well as in any virtual learning environment. For all students, including students receiving in-person services, our teams are working to ensure that a student's individualized education learning plan or an IELP, or for our students who are receiving services via 504 plan, will, is being updated so that we can provide the individualized and documented detail, documented plan so families know how services will be provided in a virtual learning environment. Families can expect to see increased synchronous and asynchronous services for interventions, special education instruction, and related services. These documents will be shared with families by September 11th. Families are encouraged to contact their child's case manager to provide input on these services as well as any supports they feel would be helpful to their student. For our earliest learners, all special education, all students will receive instruction for two hours a day for in-person services, as well as receive a half an hour of asynchronous services on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Most students are going to receive a majority of their special education services during in-person instruction. If a student is, for the rare chance, not able to receive all of their services during in-person instruction, the student's IELP will help guide how services will be provided virtually during the half hour of remote learning a day. For elementary students who are receiving in-person instruction, they will receive services for four hours a day from nine o'clock to one o'clock PM, Monday through Friday, as well as receive the one hour of asynchronous instruction daily. Again, a student's IEP will guide services for in-person instruction. And for most students, a majority of their special education needs will be, will be met during in-person instruction. On the off chance that students' needs are not fully met during this in-person instruction, a student's IELP will help guide how services will look during that one hour of remote learning, and these services will be provided asynchronously. As you've heard throughout this evening, we always really look to make sure that we could have our students in person. So in looking at the most recent guidance that came out, we had, we've looked to see if there were any students in our programs that we could have in person. And so in looking at that guidance, we looked to see, did we have any students in our specialized programs that were in alignment with the guidance that we received in August? We did notice that there were some specialized instructional programs that we could bring back at the middle school and high school level for in-person instruction. These programs did allow for cohort management, given that these specialized programs remained with one teacher throughout the day. It is also important to note that these students in these programs typically have a high intensity of need as the students are not easily able to access remote learning. Students in this specialized instructional program have extensive related service supports and often have instruction that focuses on functional academics, areas of daily living, community awareness, rec leisure, and vocational tasks. Students in our specialized instructional programs who are coming for in-person services receive instruction from eight to noon on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. And in order to promote continuity and a transition back to our in-person programming, as well as to allow for PLC collaboration between in-person or between remote learning team members, Wednesday continues to be a remote learning day. Again, most students' needs can be serviced during in-person instruction. In the off chance that a student's needs are not able to be met during in-person services, students' remainder of their services are provided during the one hour of synchronous learning. Instructional priority domains include English Language Arts, Math, IEP goals, and related services. At this time, community trips and cooking is currently on hold. A student's IELP does guide how, how remote services look for students. Our transition program is also providing in-service programming for students. In-person programming is from 8:30 to 12:30 on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and includes one hour of asynchronous learning, with Wednesday also being a remote learning day, in order to allow for a transition back to in-person programming. Instructional programming priority has been placed on functional academics, vocational life skills, and related services. While we would, at this time, community-based trips and currently is, cooking is currently on hold. However, virtual community trips are being planned based upon students' needs. Most students' services are able to be provided during in-person services. However, if a student's needs are not able to be met during this time, we are providing these services asynchronously. Currently, we have over 116 students who are being supported with, in partnership with 33 therapeutic day placement partners. Much like District 200, there are a variety of different ways in which therapeutic day placements are supporting students. Some of these services are in-person. 66% of therapeutic placements are providing some in-person services. And some of our therapeutic day placements are providing remote learning. All therapeutic day placements are subject to the same Illinois State Board of Educational requirements as District 200. We are excited to welcome Kate Millard, our new out-of-district coordinator this August. She is working to partner with our families whose students attend out-of-district placements in order to collaborate with families to ensure that their children are receiving services to help support students. If a family has any questions or concerns or needs regarding the services that their children are receiving during this reopening time, we encourage our families to reach out to Ms. Millard. She is always happy to help assist. Again, we've talked about that we are always looking to see how we could help support our students with in-person services. For our students that are currently in remote, we have always wanted to make sure and recognize that they, all of our students, continue to receive best practice special education services. So throughout all of our planning, we have always recognized that some of our students with disabilities are going to need specialized services, and we're going to need to provide a more robust service delivery model and learn from how we provided services in the spring. So our teams were very cognizant of working and delivering a more robust service delivery model than was provided last spring. Families can expect to receive increased synchronous learning for interventions, special education instruction, and related services. Families can also expect to receive increased asynchronous learning for interventions, special education instruction, and related services. Much of special education service delivery is very much about the individual student. So a family can look to a child's IELP to see exactly what the individual plan will be for their individual child and know exactly what those services will look like. And families will receive those plans on September 11th.
What are the district's plans for English learners? So I'm going to begin by talking a little bit about the programming. When programming, when identifying programs for English learners, teachers are utilizing access scores or screener scores to differentiate instruction and create instructional plans that meet the language needs of the students. We have also continued the in-person screen English language services, and we continue to create opportunities that are engaging students in activities that include the four language domains, and this is in English and their native language. Our teachers are using the students' proficiency levels in English and in their native language to instruct, to modify instruction and differentiate instruction appropriately. It is also important that we are constantly communicating with our parents and guardians in their native language. Early childhood for English learners. Students in the early childhood program receive ELP services from their classroom teacher. All of the teachers are ELP certified and the supports are embedded into the curriculum. At the elementary level, students receive services from E L and bilingual teachers while participating in in-person instructions. Now, the services vary depending on the needs of the students. We have co-teaching, push-in, push-out services, and consult. The instruction focuses on the four language domains of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Middle school in-person planning. We are currently working with Hubbell and Monroe to prioritize in-person instruction for E Ls. We are working with Hubbell and Monroe because they have the largest E L populations, and these two schools are going to serve as pilot programs for planning in-person instruction at Edison and Franklin. At the high school level, we are also working with administrators and have placed a priority to return E L students to in-person instruction. A survey will be administered to the E L students to determine their instructional and social emotional needs. That data is going to be used to design the in-person priorities for the English language learners. Some options that are being explored are providing students with academic support in the morning from seven, seven AM to eight forty-five, or at the end of the day from one thirty-five to two thirty. We will also provide students with an opportunity to access the building to complete their remote learning. This will provide students a space where they have access to reliable internet. It provides them with a safe space at school. Our implementation, implementation timeline for the high school is administering the survey which has gone out to the E L students. We will then review the survey da, data and create our, our plan for in-person instruction based on those results. That information will then be shared with teachers to help design the plan further and communicate the information with parents so that parents are aware that that is an option for their students. Again, our priority is to return in-person, E L students to in-person instruction, both at the high school and middle school levels. Students enrolled in the Virtual Academy are receiving language support. These students are clustered with teachers who hold a E S L or bilingual certificate. Now, these teachers differentiate instruction for students and provide appropriate scaffolds based on the language needs of the students. The E L students will also receive additional support from impulse, in-person E L teachers through a pull-out model. Services provided to the students are determined based on language needs and their access scores. What are the next steps in our planning for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? The next steps include to continue to monitor in-person services for health, safety, instructional delivery, and academic results. In addition, utilizing information to help guide additional planning and the expansion of in-person instruction.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I, I do. I'm, I'm thinking back to, to being an elementary teacher myself, and every Thursday was the opportunity for teachers to bring up students that they had concerns about in, to a team of, to be able to talk in. As we've been sitting here, listening and reading emails and, and, and looking at mental health issues of students, whether it be depression, anxiety, what is the process for teachers who have students, whether it's in the Virtual Academy, whether it's in the remote learning situations right now, to be able to bring to a team to see is, you know, is a five oh four needed because it's impacting their learning, depression or anxiety is impacting their learning? Like, what is, do we have systems in place for that process?
Yeah. Yes, so, the systems that buildings have continue to be in place. In fact, if a student is in Virtual Academy, they will, we do have a staff member who was a school psychologist by trade, who was overseeing Virtual Academy, and depending on who that student's home building was, we will pull in their home building student support system, so that student will have the benefit of being wrapped around by our Virtual Academy team who's directly servicing that student, as well as we will pull in their home building who knew that student last year. So, each building still continues to retain their student service team meetings where, and we've earmarked the time from two o'clock to two forty-five every day after students are dismissed for problem solving, as well as have created that same system within Virtual Academy.
So, we still have the opportunity to bring a student up? A case study could still be happening even through this remote?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'll, I'll add into that, too. Mrs. Ekstrom outlined the, the process. I'll just add to it that the Virtual Academy teachers are continuing to meet in a collaborative way, just as we do in, in person. So, they have weekly P L Cs, meetings, and having an administrator directly oversee those programs is allowing that conversation to be facilitated as well.
And so, parents have that opportunity, though, to, to be part of this as well and sharing, and that information is communicated out there to them as to how they can do that if they have concerns?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know if I give a question? No?
No, I'm good.
Any other thoughts or comments from board members?
So, what's the criteria for, you know, the various categories? You know?
So, the, that is an I E P team decision. So, every year, a student has an annual review, and so, parents, the student's general education teacher, their special education teacher have a team meeting, and then they have conversations as to what is the level of service that a student would need, and they make recommendations as to that level of programming. And so, it is a team-based decision to help guide a student into their level of program.
Okay, I'm, I'm thinking specifically, like, the one woman that spoke tonight was, her daughter, I believe it was, was affected by epilepsy and, you know, would that qualify for special services?
So, that is a state eligibility. So, the Illinois State, or, the state of Illinois has certain disability categories, and so, if you go to the state website, you can pull up what the eligibility category is. And so, when a student comes up for an evaluation, that I E P team will do testing, and they will then look at the thirteen different types of disability categories, and they will look at that data to see if that data is in alignment with any of those disability categories. And if a student is in alignment with those, they would be considered eligible for special education under that eligibility category.
So, like, so, the kids that are in-person right now, those are kids that are only in the instructional classroom? Is that correct?
Yeah, so, in a specific type of instructional program. So, we operate under a full continuum of services. So, you heard Dr. Salagi talk about when, at elementary, we looked under certain criteria for how we could look at the elementary model. So, we really utilized some of the work that had already been done in, was already being done in District Two Hundred for how we could bring back our elementary students, and we use that work to help guide our special education in-person services. So, some of that key guidance that we had received from the Illinois Public Health Department that really talked about, could we contact trace? Could we limit movement of students? And so, special education programs that fell within that specific guidance, we brought those programs back. Now, you heard on our last side, we're constantly evaluating to see if there's special education programs or if there's re-tweaking that we need to do within our department as part of that next phase of our reopening plan, so we can bring more students back, which is what we, we want to have our students with us. So, we're looking to see how we can make adjustments to provide even more in-person services.
And then, the, when kids do have services, are they being, I'm sorry, I just kind of got a lot, was it being done synchronously or asynchronously? Or does it depend?
It depends. So, we, most services are being done, um, depends on where they're at. So, like, for many of our elementary students, our early childhood students are in-person, many of their services are going to be delivered in person. For our high school students, or our middle school or high school resource students, as we would say, many of their su, services may be provided synchronously, and then some additional services may be provided asynchronously, and a family will know the exact breakdown based upon that I E L P.
Okay, and so, they're a part, the families are a part of that conversation?
Yeah.
And then, for, um, for out-placed kids, is that, if they're, so sixty-six percent of the placements are implementing some kind of in-person services, that other thirty-three percent or thirty-four percent, is that our responsibility, like, if, or is it the, where we, the, the school that they have been out-placed to as far as if that child is placed in a school where they're not in person, but they really need, you know, they're, they're, the services they need or really need to be done in person? Does that fall back on us, or does that fall, is that still within the outplace school?
For all of our students, whether they're in-person or out-of-district, we still have an obligation to make sure that a student's needs are being met. So, even for our students that are out-of-district, if a family feels that that, that remote plan is not adequately meeting their needs, I do encourage them to reach out to Ms. Millard, because the first next step is for us to schedule a meeting with that out-of-district, so we could start to learn what are the supports? What are the tweaks that might need to be made to the plan? Like, first, we need to kind of find out what's working, what's not working, and what adjustments can we make? And then, we can have those nuanced conversations about that individual child to see what types of tweaks, services, supports need to be made, because they're still our student.
Right, okay, okay.
Okay, well, one question?
Yeah, just fantastic presentation. A lot of work, really fantastic. It was professional, it was easy to follow, it was clear, it was, it was just fantastic. I'm so impressed by the services we offer, right? And, and it's a gem of public edu, that's why we, that's why we have public education, right? It's, it's, these are services we offer, and they're done at such a high-quality level and with high-quality people in a professional way. We're going to talk about budget a little bit, right? And we, we, one of the factors to talk about is our cost per student, how we're able to deliver that in a really responsible and effective way for our community. But when you can, and you take that data point of our, our budget and cost per student, with the breadth of services and the professional quality we deliver, and just everything we're doing, I am blown away and impressed, and just want to say thank you. I know it's late, and just want you to know that didn't go unnoticed.
It really is a thank you to our staff. And they're not here tonight, but it's really because of them and all the work that they did over the summer. I really cannot thank our teachers, our related service staff, all of our E L teachers, like, hours they spent over the summer, so it's a thank you to them.
Yeah, no, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you for, both of you for that. Certainly adds another layer of complexity that a lot of people don't realize. All right, so, uh, we are at the consent agenda. I will read, um, we have eleven items. First on the consent agenda is acceptance of gifts from Hubbell Middle School P T A, approval of the renewal of Scantron Achievement Series and the analytic subscriptions, number three, approval of the occupancy permit for, for the R O E for Jefferson Early Childhood Center, approval of vendor contracts generating revenue, number five, approval of modifications to the tuition-based fees. Number six is approval of change orders for the twenty-twenty summer construction projects. Number seven is approval of change order for furniture for the new Jefferson Early Childhood Center. Number eight is approval of statements of completion for summer twenty-twenty capital improvement work throughout the district. Number nine is approval of bills payable on payroll. Number ten is approval of minutes, August twelfth, twenty-twenty, open. August nineteenth, twenty-twenty, special meeting, open. And approval to district recordings of closed sessions prior to April twenty-nineteen is allowable, allowable by law. Finally, number eleven is approval of personal report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Any other items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Any information from Dr. Schuler, okay?
No, no additional information.
Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move.
Move by Mr. Hanlon?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long, Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes, the consent agenda has been approved as presented. We have a, also have a policy posting consent agenda with seventeen items. I'm going to read this a little bit differently because a lot of them are the same. Uh, number one is approval of revised policy four point one five zero for facility management and building programs. Number two is approval of revised policy two point two two zero, Board of Education meeting procedure for public review and comment. Number three is approval to post revised policy two point two six zero, uniform grievance procedure for public review and comment. Number four is approval to post a new policy two point two six five, Title Nine Sexual Harassment Grievance Procedure for public review and comment. Number five is approval to post rewritten policy four point one eight zero, pandemic preparedness, management, and recovery for public review and comment. And then, the next twelve are all policies that we are approving to post. The revised policies we're approving to post for public review and comment. I'll just go through the twelve of them individually. It is five point one zero, equal employment opportunity and minority recruitment. Policy five point two zero, workplace harassment prohibited. Number, uh, the next one is policy five point one zero zero, staff development program. Number nine, I guess it's the, yeah, number nine is the revised policy five point two two zero, substitute teachers for public review and comment. Next is policy five point three three zero, sick days, vacation holidays, and leaves. A number, next one's policy seven point one zero, equal educational opportunities. Number, or, the next one is policy seven point two zero, harassment of students prohibited. Next one is po, policy seven point one eight zero, prevention of and response to bullying, intimidation, and harassment. Our fourth, next one is policy seven point one eight five, teen dating violence prohibited. Next one is policy seven point one nine zero, student behavior, and then policy seven point three four zero, student records. And lastly, uh, policy seven point three four, oh, this, the last one's a policy, posting a new policy, seven point three four five, use of educational technology, student data privacy and security. Any items board members want removed from this consent agenda? Okay, Dr. Schuler, any questions?
No, I just, just want to mention that the policy committee did meet and, uh, review all of these proposed changes. This, uh, these all come from two editions of, uh, press, uh, policy updates. So, we had a lengthy meeting to go through all of these and, uh, bring these forward to the board for your, uh, consideration and approval.
Any questions or comments from the board, or comments from the committee?
Yeah, I just wanted to just quickly highlight, um, three things that we talked about in committee. I just want to point for a policy, um, four point one eight zero, which is the pandemic preparedness, management, recovery, that the rewriting of that. So, going for it is when, when we were, Dr. Schuler presented the remote learning plan, we did not need to, as a board, we did not need to approve that, but with this new policy, we will need to approve it. Everything's the same, except we would come to the board for a formal vote, so I just want to point that out. And, uh, one thing that we had asked Dr. Schuler about was, uh, I noticed in, um, policy five one zero, um, which is the equal employment opportu, well, let me start with this. In policy seven point one zero, in the equal educational opportunities, which talks about, you know, equality for students and, you know, um, among various different groups, that it mentions gender identity, but in policy five point one zero, which is the equal employment opportunity for our staff, it does not mention gender identity. And I just thought that was an inconsistent, um, piece to have within the two policies. So, um, Rob suggested that we contact press to make that suggestion, that suggested change to five point one zero, and Dr. Schuler has a contact there that we can make that, um, suggestion for that policy. Um, and then, lastly, I went and asked about seven point three four five, which is the new, the last one there. which is the new, the last one there, the use of the educational technologies. That there was a mention in one of the footnotes, um, that wouldn't be in the version you see about, um, staff training, um, on cybersecurity training. And I was just curious if there, it brought maybe if there was any information on that. If our te- because we're using so many techno-, you know, different technologies to teach right now, um, what was there, it wasn't a mandated thing for, for teachers and staff, but I was just curious if.
Well, he used to go before with, you know, conditions and then also has training videos associated with it.
Okay.
Real mandate, but we offer them off just now.
Okay. Okay.
So we do the cybersecurity, you know, issues and that, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Great. Thanks. I'll refer to Rob if you have anything to add.
I have nothing to add.
All right. Thanks from the committee. Any questions or comments from board members? Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Grantery?
Yes.
Mr. Yerken?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mantherson?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes. Okay. The policy posting consent agenda has been approved. Uh, we'll get down to our action items. We have one action item tonight. Uh, that's the resolution, resolution to adopt the twenty twenty dash twenty-one budget.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson, and welcome to finances late at night. Tonight, we're asking the Board of Education to approve the budget. This is the end of the process. Back in July, the Board of Education posted a tentative budget for public consumption. Uh, we had to have it, uh, available for thirty days for public review. A, uh, public hearing was held at the August twelfth Board of Education meeting. And we are required by law to pass the budget by the end of the first quarter, which is September thirtieth. So at our, uh, business meeting tonight, we're asked the board to approve the budget. Uh, since the time of posting, obviously, a lot has happened, uh, with, uh, uh, our school year and our planning. So we did make some modifications to our, our budget from what was originally posted. The Board of Education has the ability to make final changes prior to approval. So tonight, I'm going to present them to you. And I'm going to kind of build up into the education fund because that's where the majority of the changes are. Uh, starting with the transportation fund, uh, back when we talked, I think Mr. Hanlon mentioned the contingency money. Uh, back in July, when we started talking about transportation and how we were going to accommodate that with some of the new rules, uh, we allocated of the million dollars, three hundred thousand of that, uh, which was educational, uh, EBF money, uh, to, um, uh, the transportation fund for contingency. As it turned out, as we looked at the number of students that were attending and riding buses, and as we did it, we didn't really need to add that many routes. I think we added one total. And even at the middle and high with the way we were going to provide, uh, service to students, we obviously did not, uh, realize what we thought is going to need, we were going to need for extra buses. So, um, what we're asking the board to do tonight is move three hundred thousand of that EBF revenue back to the education fund and eliminate the line item for the contingency in the transportation fund. Uh, the second, uh, change in the transportation fund is reducing state revenue by two hundred thousand. Uh, the report, uh, was completed for our state, uh, that we have to turn to the state by August fifteenth. And we estimate our revenues to be about two hundred thousand less than we originally had posted in July. To offset that, we also are asking the board to reduce the expenditures by two hundred thousand dollars. We believe, uh, with, uh, obviously, starting the school year without, um, having our middle's and high schools in, uh, that's about a sixteen thousand dollar reduction each day for not providing, uh, that transportation. Uh, we also believe, uh, you know, we're not, uh, we have some cab services and some outplacement transportation we're not doing as well. So we believe the, uh, reduction in expenditures is warranted to offset the loss of state revenue. Moving to the Operations Maintenance Fund, uh, we're asking the Board of Education, uh, to move six hundred thousand of EBF, uh, funding back to the education fund from the Operations and Maintenance Fund. To offset that, we would like to increase the amount of fund balance that we are going to use from three million to three point six million. If you recall, we were on schedule originally to do two million, but when we decided to create, uh, create the contingency funding of a million, we increased that funding by, uh, of use of fund balance by one million from two to three. We are now, uh, asking to go to three point six million. So ostensibly, the seven point two million that we have in our capital projects fund for construction, three point six of that will be funded out of fund balance. The other three point six will come from our operating balance. And I'll talk a little bit about that here in a second. Uh, moving to the education fund, uh, we would be increasing the revenue line item of EBF by nine hundred thousand. That's the three hundred thousand, uh, that's coming back from the transportation as well as the six hundred thousand from the O and M fund. Our vocational grants, we got some updated information. So those increased by about forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So that is in there as well. Uh, we've reduced food sales by about five hundred thousand dollar revenue. Um, again, with the way, uh, the lunch service has changed since even back in July when we started talking, uh, about how, uh, we were going to operate this year. A lot has changed in that regard. Uh, this, the federal government did, um, uh, extend the program that was in place where all students under the age of eighteen get a free meal, whether they're a free student, reduced student, or paid. Uh, so depending on the usage there, we, we believe we'll have, uh, probably, we could see an increase in our, in our, uh, federal reimbursement, but we're still tracking that. Um, on the expenditure side, our contracted services, we're decreasing, um, the amount, uh, by about four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. A good portion of that is in our food service contract because we do believe, uh, obviously, sales are, uh, going to be reduced. So, um, we also believe the expenditures to the program will be reduced because all, not, not all students will be taking a meal. And that, uh, uh, the sales will go down. So that means we're not charged by the contractor. So, uh, that's about five hundred thousand dollars. There were some other minor changes within the contracted service line item based on some school budgets moving around. Uh, the supply line item decreased by about eighty-four hundred dollars. Again, those are just some minor tweaks that schools made with their budgets. And then the other expenditure line item, uh, is increased by, uh, nearly nine hundred thousand, which is that increase of evidence-based funding towards our contingency line item, which will go in the education front, fund from, uh, um, to up to one point four million dollars from, uh, the original, uh, line item of five hundred thousand. Again, that, that move is really tied to, I think, what Dr. Schuler, uh, talked about briefly, was that staffing increases associated with, uh, the operation of the school district will increase as we've had to add staff. So that contingency line item, uh, is obviously, we needed to increase that line item uh, to accommodate the extra staff that we had to hire. So that contingency line item now is, is going to be one point four million dollars. Also included in the state's budget document, this is something we do each year, is we have to add a line item. It's a, uh, as, uh, Mr. Matheson likes to say, this is a below-the-line, uh, item. But we have to include the anticipated, uh, on behalf payments, uh, to TRS by the state of Illinois on behalf of the district. Uh, that's an in-and-out, a revenue in and a expenditure out that doesn't really hit our operating, uh, uh, operating, you know, budget per se. But it's something we have to include, uh, in the line item. We have a sixty-five million dollar line item. That number changes dramatically each year, uh, up and down. So it's, uh, somewhat of a moving target, but we have to, uh, budget, uh, what we believe it to be. So, uh, we won't know that actual number for a while yet. But, uh, we, we do have that line item in the budget. And then finally, this year is new to, uh, school districts. You have to include a line item similar to the TRS on behalf of what you believe your student activity line item to be. And that's also like, like, below-the-line, uh, revenue and expenditure for activity funds in the district. And those are run primarily through our high schools. Um, and we, uh, have used what we've historically seen in the audit, uh, knowing that it may, or probably will be less because of the way we are operating this year. Uh, but we've held in, in and out in that line item of about three point five million dollars. Finally, our operating budget for the school district for this year. We have revenues of a little over a hundred and eighty million, expenditures of a hundred and seventy-six million, which gives us an operating balance of just under three point eight million. Again, reminding the board with the way the auditors wanted us to do our capital projects where we're spending, all of our expenditures come out of the capital projects fund. Three point six of that gets moved over into that fund, uh, along with the, um, three point six million of fund balance to get to that seven point two. So if you, you know, again, taking into account the three point six we're transferring, we're about just under two hundred thousand dollars positive, uh, operating budget, uh, overall. So the budget is balanced. Um, obviously, this has been an interesting year, not only for staffing and education and technology and communications. It's also an interesting year in the world of finance as far as budgeting goes. But, uh, we present united, uh, balanced budgets, uh, for your approval. And I'll answer any questions.
Go back a page, one page. What does EBF stand for?
Evidence-based funding. That's a former general state aid.
So the state aid is allocable to many funds and we're just stripping that from what?
We've used that to move it around to offset, correct. And then, uh, increased our, uh, use of fund balance.
Okay. And the seven point two million of expenditures, some from fund balance, some from the, uh, operating.
Operating.
Operating income.
Okay.
That operating income there is in line with our, not the Gambiani funding, but the, uh, what do you call that?
Sherman Durst?
Sherman Durst.
Correct.
Got to throw that in there real quick. And I guess the last thing is now we, we've talked a lot about salaries tonight and so on. I assume the projections that you've used for salaries anticipate some form of increase if we have to go back, or if we go back, not have to go back, to, uh, in person? I mean, how, how are we dealing with that? I mean, we have a lot of people we have to hire?
Yeah, we do, a lot of people were hired, and I didn't, I don't know a lot, I won't, don't use that term. But I, uh, Dr. Kyle's department obviously has had to hire additional staff. A lot of them, I believe, on a one-year basis. So they have one-year contracts. So obviously, the contingency we're setting aside is helping to offset that one year of known costs, uh, that we have for salaries. Again, assuming we're back to somewhat normal next year, those costs would go away as those contracts drop off. Uh, again, assuming we're somewhat back to normal.
So they're, they're, they're in the budget as part of the contingency in effect?
Correct.
And that along with supplies and the contingency total is what number again?
It's a, it's, we have two hundred thousand in the operations and maintenance fund for contingency. And we have, uh, one point four in the education fund. So if you go back, we started with a million, now we're at a million six. And that's.
Okay. It's a million. We increased it by six hundred.
Correct.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Farley. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to adopt the final twenty twenty dash twenty-one budget as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Matheson.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Mr. Grantery?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The resolution to adopt the final twenty twenty-one budget has been approved.
We have to sign that tonight before we leave, right?
Yes. Everybody has to sign that. Um, we're written reports next. Yes. We have, uh, five different written reports that are provided for the information only. The monthly financial reports, the FOIA report, the early learning center construction update. That'll be coming off the list pretty soon here, right? The board communication log, and then the teacher and administrator compensation reports. Any questions on that? Okay. Next is reports from board members. Um, board committee reports, the, uh, September second, twenty twenty, HR Policy Committee was attached. Any other questions or additional information? Okay. Uh, we, I know we do have a couple of different committees. We talked about setting up some meetings here. And then other reports from board members on any other topics?
Yeah. Um, I want to talk about the governance award.
Yes.
So, um, uh, for the fifth consecutive, uh, governance award, our district has been awarded that. I believe it was fifteen, um, districts in the state of Illinois received it. And congratulations to everybody sitting around this table. Jenna and Susan helped with, um, areas of, uh, for the narratives of areas that they have served on the board. I wrote some other ones, but the, the big thank you to Diana for so much help in terms of pulling all of that together that she has done for us as well. So we just received notice on that.
Yep.
So to be celebrated and we will be honored, I believe, at the virtual, um, IASB in, I don't remember when it is, first week of November, maybe, end of October, something like that.
Yeah. Just on that note, I thank you to all of you. I think, you know, we, I think we're one of maybe two school districts, maybe three, that have received that five times now. I don't know who else is in this group that has also received it the fifth time. So it's a great, uh, great, uh, thing that we started here, or started a long time ago as a board and something worth continuing in. The, I, the governance workshop that I mentioned before is, is a part of that. So we'll get that scheduled here, uh, for this fall.
Can I, can I mention one more thing too?
Yeah.
I want to put a, a thank you to the, uh, police department. I, you know, a few of us were able to be at a first day of school. Um, the police department had an officer at every single school. And I think that, that, that was really appreciated. The other thing that, and I don't know if it was at every single school, but I was at Washington. The bus company had somebody there as well, monitoring the buses as they were coming in and helping with, you know, getting people off buses. And I thought that was an extra, um, nice thing to have on that first day. So, to both of them.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments?
Other than that, I, I was at a couple of schools for opening. Um, I was at Madison on the first day of school. And it was just a really neat experience to watch that family, a lot of walkers there walking, the whole family is walking their kids to school. The kids are obviously thrilled to be there. A lot of kids, you know, obviously greeting friends for the first time in a long time, taking pictures in front of the school sign and everything. And, um, Tim was running all over the place, making sure that the logistics were in order and working with buses. So very celebratory. And I was over at Jefferson when they, um, opened. And that was amazing, watching each of those little kids get a personal escort into the new building and just watching all the work that goes into that. That's, that's an impressive group of individuals over there. All seemed to go very well at both schools I was at. And lots of masks, I will say.
What's that?
All the people that showed up at, um, at Madison, you know, had their masks on, you know, coming onto the school property. So that was impressive.
Good. Okay. So topics.
I did, I did attend the, uh, and attended the two, the rally last night, was it?
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, it's similar to what we heard tonight, to be true, and, and, you know, but there were some other students that spoke very well. I, I was really impressed by it. It was, uh, you know, a positive statement, in my opinion. And, uh, you know, I, I think it, you know, was informative in many cases. Uh, there were people from other districts surrounding the area that were there. And, you know, all in all, it was a, you know, informative, good item and good presentation. And, uh, you know, I didn't think it got nasty or any, anything like that. So it was really, I thought, you know, it was impressive. I thought it was a, you know, I was proud of our students and parents to put it on. So.
Good.
Just real quick, um, the Equity Task Force, that's what it's called, right? We had a meeting, second meeting last, um, Wednesday. We covered the first two chapters in the book that, um, you guys received. Uh, we had good breakout sessions. And, um, you know, I think it's just good discussion. And, um, you know, really focused on, the, the book is really primarily focused on race. Um, so that's a lot of the initial focus. But I, I, I think a lot of the, um, discussion and things that came out will, are across the spectrum. Um, but I think a really good comment from Rob about focusing on students and that it's going to be one, that it's going to be diff- not difficult, but reining that in is going to be good. There's another, there's a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Council that is a community-led group. Uh, but the night, and I've been participating in those meetings. And there is some crossover. There are two or three or four people that participate there that are also on the Equity Task Force. So while that's a unofficial community, I think that also helps add some credibility and, um, just focus to the whole topic. So, thanks.
Speaking of the book, I, I saw it here on the table. I assume this is ours? And, and how, how did we end up with this book and, you know, what was? And, and how do we end up with this book and, you know, what was the choices?
Yeah, the individual that we're working with on the task force, Dr. Marcus Kroom brought that text to us. So it's really written like a case study perspective, looking at two school districts in Wisconsin that went through, I think, a similar transition in the shift in their demographic. And it, and it just kind of evaluates from a case study perspective how they handled that transition and, and what you can learn from that experience that we can then apply to our own context as a school district that sees a, a student demographic that is changing.
Thank you.
Okay, topics for future discussion is, of course, the District 200 reopening plans for this school year. Our next meeting is September 23rd, the committee, the whole, here again at Hubble Middle School, 7 o'clock. Our next regular meeting is October 14th, again, here at Hubble Middle School. Are there any public comments for, no public comments for non-agenda items? So there being no further action, it comes before the board, an open session, ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson.
It doesn't matter, it was.
Miss, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? All right, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.